To the Blue Lake City Council Meeting, it's 5:30 on June 10th. Please stand to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. City Manager Burkhart, would you please establish the court, or sorry? Staff, would you please establish your court?
Yes, absolutely happy to. Councilmember Napier.
Here.
Councilmember Louis Luso.
Here.
Mayor Sawatsky.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Scovani.
Here.
Right, we have a courtroom.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Between, we have a public comment. On the closed session line but two.
Yeah, it was amended on Monday morning to include public close, excuse me, public comment on non-agenda items and to approve the agendas. That was added on Monday morning well in advance of the 24-hour period of notice.
I was speaking in reference to coming out of closed session and then having public comment at that time?
Yes.
Another public comment?
Yes, that would be your non-agendized public items or non-agendized public comment.
Okay.
It's on an updated sheet that maybe you guys don't have access to at the moment?
Yeah, we should probably all have one. I dropped a few over there. There are some there.
Sorry, I just printed at work and like a while ago, a couple days ago.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. That was the only change that happened.
All right, did you need one?
If you guys spare it.
Thanks.
And you guys are good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the public have any comment on the agenda? I'm not, I mean, I'm not necessarily move things around, but go ahead.
Yeah, good evening all. I was actually the person who flagged the two errors in the agenda that you didn't have the public comment on non-agenda items and also your approval of the agenda. My concern is that these closed sessions are starting to remind me about my friend Karen Nessler, longtime Blue Lake City Clerk, told me about council meetings in the 1950s before the Brown Act. Her mom would come home from council meetings disgusted, saying the man called the meeting to order and then immediately went into closed session. I did look into the government code, which does allow the appointment of a public employee in closed session. But my concern is going into closed session at the beginning of meetings. It's starting to sound like the 1950s a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the agenda? Moving up to Zoom, anyone on Zoom wish to comment? All right, bringing it back to council for consideration of the agenda.
I move that we accept it as delivered.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. All right, moving on to item number two, public comment on closed session items. Does the public wish to comment on the closed session items? Seeing none, moving up to Zoom. All right, bringing it back to council. We get a motion, move into closed session?
Motion to move to closed session.
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 It passes, we're moving into closed session. Thank you very much.
Looks like it.
Let me know when ready. Already?
Are you ready, Justin?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, we're ready on this side.
All right, just want to go ahead and report out of closed session. During closed session, we discussed the appointment of a, of the city clerk position. We also discussed the appointment of the deputy city clerk position. During that meeting, we, council member Louis Luso made a motion to appoint city manager Danny Burkhart to the position of city clerk as well as, sorry. Laura McCallan hand to the deputy city clerk position. The council voted for, in favor of the motion. Does the public wish to comment on that item?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We got Julie on.
Julie, go ahead.
Hey, Julie Christie, I'd like to commend, I'd like to commend Danny stepping up to fill that role right now because we need to have a city clerk in. However, I would still like to see as much advocacy for our positions that need to be filled. And once those are available and they're scripted out in the way that they are the correct job positions, I know there's a lot of people in the public that would love to circulate them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number six, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake, but is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for the public input. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address the items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes on each specific agenda item. All right, go ahead and move to open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Yes, go ahead.
I'll see, I know, I was gonna wait to the end, but I'll go ahead, comment now. Thank you. It's been a while. It's always a pleasure to come out. I know I'm not your supervisor, although I lobbied for it during the redistricting. But at any rate, I am a supervisor that represents you in that we all represent the whole county. So it's a pleasure to be here. Your law enforcement contract was approved today. So that will move forward according to your wishes. I know it's still a lot of money for what you're doing and all that, but I wanted to let you know that. And then I just wanted to share something I've learned in my six years, and that is this thing I call lenses. We see the world through the lens that we have in front of us. So like when you're wearing sunglasses, if you really want to see a yellow kind of world, you got the yellow lens in the glasses, or how about a nice blue world, you know? And so those lenses, it's really neat to have a lot of lenses and use them all, you know? And that's what I found, I mean, our jobs are so hard. The pressures that are put on us to try and understand all the community, all the different sides of the community, do our homework for packages that can be voluminous to read and understand, and then to listen to people and make decisions out of the best of our heart and our minds to, you know, for the benefit of the whole community. And that is not an easy task. But I've found that the more lenses I use, the better my perception is in terms of what, what the bigger picture is and how I would like to, you know, make decisions. So, you know, and at the end of the day, when things get really tough, I put the kaleidoscope in for the lens. Just kind of go, wow, that was a lot. Lastly, I just want to say thank you for having an MOU with the Great Redwood Trail. I'm the vice chair of the Great Redwood Trail Board, you may not know that. But I want to thank you for that, and I know it was just done by the manager. And so you're probably going to be reconsidering that at a future meeting, I believe, is coming up possibly. At least that's what I've heard. Am I?
Probably.
Probably, yeah, maybe, maybe not, probably, whatever.
We have a lot of agenda.
You do, and a lot of parties, but I just wanted to say thank you because we don't have an office yet. We're building our team, we're building the whole thing. And within a year or so, we're gonna have that, want to transfer that and do all that, but you guys have helped us out. We appreciate the partnership with the city because there's so many great trail projects, including the ones that have been done, the ones we're working with, with the rancheria. And someday, if we can work it out with Pete Busman and other landowners, the trail out, the railroad grade, all the way to the North Fork Levy and back on the North Fork Levy into town. So just wanted to thank you for that. And if I can answer any questions or be of any help with that kind of stuff, let me know. And lastly, as a board of supervisor with knowledge of Blue Lake and, you know, really still very vested here, if I can be of help, please call on me, let me know. And some of you have, and I appreciate the conversations. So, thank you.
How are your bridge building skills?
My bridge building skills are good, and we're gonna be coming back to the city with a proposal, myself, not county supervisor, to help the city with the overdue maintenance on the Powers Creek Bridge, with volunteers to try and keep your costs down to a very, very small minimum. But I'll be working with Danny to bring forward a proposal on that to the council for your consideration.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Yes, Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, Julie Christie again. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Awesome. Yeah, it's cool to have Mr. Sunnome Madrone in there. I'm always like, where's Mike, man? Yeah, supervisors, last two days, lot done there, similar to you guys. I would really like to bring a promotion for Annie and Mary Day, August 3rd. There's a lot of vendors still and volunteer positions available. So the Congress does have something out right now, listing, and Parks and Rec shared it too, all the volunteers they need and what vendor booths and stuff they have available. So I just would love to get that circulated to everybody and, and get everybody out and about for a brand new date on Annie and Mary Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Becky, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, so just for something fun, I would like everybody to know that on June 29th, which is a Sunday, Angela Dare and I are gonna be putting together a scavenger hunt for the kids. So it'll be something to look forward to, and we will put more information out soon. All right.
All right.
You so much. Moving back to the public here, anyone wish to make a time? Bringing it back to the council. All right, moving on to item number seven, accept resignations. Since our last meeting, there have been two resignations. Councilmember Fire submitted his resignation on 5/27/2025. Planning Commissioner Elaine Hogan submitted her resignation 6/5/25. Council should receive these resignations officially before giving staff further direction on the vacancy. Danny, you want to go ahead and give us any more information on that?
That's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If you officially receive these, then you can give us directions on how you'd like to fill these vacancies. The next item is gonna be filling the city council vacancies, so you can reserve comments on how we do this until that item. And then the planning commissioner vacancy will be filled as in the normal usual process.
I guess I just need to know on the current vacancies for the commissions, how long have they been vacant? Have they been posted for 30 days?
The arts and heritage ones have definitely been posted for 30 days, and the economic development one had been posted for over 30 days. The planning commission is due to be posted upon acceptance of this resignation.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussions from council? Would the public like to comment? On the side? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
So do we need to have a motion to accept the resignations? I guess we do. I guess we do.
I'm gonna make a quick comment before we move in.
Okay.
Make it, take the motion. Dear Ms. Hogan, thank you for your service as Chair of the Blue Lake Planning Commission. I acknowledge and respect your decision to step down, particularly in the light of potential conflict presented by your concurrent roles as the Chair of the Planning Commission and as the Executive Director of the Great Redwood Trail Agency. Given the city's growing focus on tourism and trail-related development, your resignation helps preserve the integrity of both the commission and the agency you lead. I regret that my request for a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council was interpreted as a lack of collaboration. My intent was to strengthen communication and alignment, not to diminish the council's role or authority. I appreciate your contributions to Blue Lake and wish you continued success in your regional work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
So I would move that we accept the resignations of both Christopher Fire from the council and Elaine Hogan from the planning commission.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 It passes. All right. Moving on to item number seven. Sorry, our numbers are off now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the packet numbers are now off, but the agenda items number eight.
So we've accepted the resignation, moving on to item eight, the city council vacancy process. This is a discussion action item. Danny, I'll let you go ahead and give us a description of the site.
So in the past, you have, you, as in the royal you, the city council has generally elected to appoint in lieu of doing a special election, especially since it's only one seat, and we're in an off-election year. Usually that needs to take place within 60 days according to California code. And the last time we did this, we had the application that's on the, in the packet there. It's a one-pager that says, you know, please provide this information plus answer these questions on another sheet of paper. And then you typically have had this period open for as many as 30 days, but due to the timing of meetings and holidays and everything, I'm gonna say that I recommend a period of it being open through the 15th of July and then to go on your following meeting before August 10th. Because that's your 60 day mark.
Go on the August 10th, or you said?
A meeting right before August 10th, which would be your fourth Tuesday meeting in July.
Okay.
Yes, your normal regular meeting.
So that makes sense.
You say there was an application in the packet?
Yes, there should be. It's on the back page of, if you have a two-sided packet, it's on the back page of this.
Oh.
Agenda report.
Little tiny application.
Yeah, just was a one-page. This is what was used previously, in case anybody needs to see. One-pager, really basic.
It's pretty low-tech.
Yes.
It's on, it's on the website.
I believe it is.
Can I make a request on maybe an update on the form?
I can't discuss that right now, but.
Okay.
I mean, I, can we discuss that?
I mean, this is where the part where you're gonna tell me how you want this vacancy filled. So if you want to change how this is filled, now's the time to do it.
Okay, great.
Under length of time, living, working, and Blue Lake, if those could be two separate questions, if it's living or if it's working?
Does anybody else on the council have thoughts about that?
I think they can't even, they have to live in Blue Lake, right?
Correct.
Yes, you have to live in Blue Lake to be on the city council.
So I just.
Well, the reason I'm bringing that up is because that's also a combined question on commissions, and it makes, it can make a difference. So just separating them for argument's sake.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Sure.
Provides a little more clarity.
And I think for purposes of the city council appointment especially, that they perhaps align distinguishing if they're living full-time or part-time. Because we could have a condition where somebody lives in Costa Rica eight months out of the year, and then they're back over here. So it might, might be relevant on how we consider them a resident or not. I guess it would go by their, where they're registered to vote.
That's exactly correct.
Lucky guess.
Any other further comments to the form itself? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public for comment. Does the, does the public wish to comment on this process? Seeing none, well, Becky's, are you, nevermind? All right, moving back to council.
So the recommendation is to have the applications period open starting tomorrow, I suppose.
Yes.
And closing on July 15th. And then, and then the appointment will happen in our fourth Tuesday meeting in July.
Yes.
And which would be the 29th. No, the 22nd.
Oh, yeah, you're correct, 22nd.
Yes. So I would move that.
Go ahead.
I would move that we open, open up posting of the vacancy and begin receiving applications tomorrow through July 15th. And that we appoint someone to the vacancy on July 22nd at our regular meeting.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Public wish to comment on this? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Well, I just, I just want to point out that when Elizabeth McKay stepped down from the council, she stepped down in July, the last meeting in July, and you did, and we did not appoint someone until October 7th. So there was quite a lengthy time. But I have no objections to making it shorter. I thought that was a long, too long of a time personally.
Yeah, it was extended because the council wasn't made aware of her resignation for quite a few weeks after it occurred. So this time we're more in the know and able to move quicker.
Julie, go ahead.
I, I'm assuming we're on the, our council application item. Thank you, I get lost when I'm doing chores. Thank you. I really support the process going through right now. We already have some really like qualified people in the community that I think would be willing to jump in, take some burden off you guys, help out with ad hocks and our other meetings that you guys are liaisons with. I just really aspire like you guys to have another critical thinker on there, and it's really non-biased and, and, and ready to take a little pressure too. I mean, there's a little bit of heat out there, but honestly, I, I already know that you guys are on top of the mountain for everywhere you need to be, and having somebody else there helping pull some weight right now, I look forward to seeing you guys have another good teammate. So I'll, happy to get that application out for you. Let's get her going. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any, any final comments from the public? All right, coming back. Are we at a first and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 It passes. All right, moving on to item number eight, city council vacancy process, or sorry, nine. Fourth of July flyers referred to the Public Safety Commission. The Public Safety Commission has referred the council, referred to the council the approval for distribution of flyers reminding the public of our local fireworks ordinance, and to please remember to use safe and sane fireworks to celebrate the upcoming Independence Day.
And the copy of the flyer is in your packet there. It is a double-sided flyer, but in the way that your packet printed, it's two papers, but this is one of the ones that's actually ready for distribution, has our ordinance. Blue Lake thanks you for saying, you know, staying safe and sane with your fireworks this year. Here's a copy of our ordinance. And then a community member, I believe it was Marty Granger, created this flyer for us and brought it to the Public Safety Commission.
Great. All right, is council, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
So in order to do the flyers, they have to be printed up. They'll take a little paper, a little ink, and it led me to the question, do any of our commissions have a budget that they can work with?
They did this themselves. They're already printed and everything.
Oh, no, no, this is not to say not to do it. It's
I'm just letting you know.
Because they're doing it. It's like, oh, should we at some point consider?
Generally, when a commission requests printing, we'll do what we can to accommodate if staff is available to do that. Usually, they're not requests for like this, quite this many usually. But we usually will coordinate in advance if it's something that, that labor-intensive or printing-intensive. So, yeah, we don't, it's not, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but we generally don't get enough requests that I've had to put a limit on their requests. Yeah.
So I think part of the discussion in the Public Safety Commission meeting was, was about distribution. How are we gonna distribute this flyer? Marty had proposed, you know, a little education afternoon activity at the school, but the school sort of rejected that. So I think there's something going on where they're gonna bring it to the kids at the summer camp, but that's a pretty small number. And I think we have something like 300 flyers there. And so, you know, that, you know, we should open discussion about how we might like to distribute that, if we want to ask for volunteers to go door-to-door, and we can, and we can put those on folks', you know, people's doors in town. I think, I think there's something in the neighborhood of 500 to 600 households in town. But anyway, it's just an idea to see if we can spread the word about being kind to your auditory-sensitive neighbors and their pets and, and that sort of thing.
Do we have a, a, a way to do this on our websites and or social media?
Scanned, scanned copy. I was just gonna put that on the website. And, you know, if you guys choose to accept distribution of this, because I don't tend to put things on the city website unless it's something that's an official business that's been approved. But, yeah, we're happy to share that on the website and everything and on the social media. Happy to help get it distributed, you know, in my off time, so, you know.
And we do have access to the Blue Lake Facebook now, so we can put stuff on there, okay?
So we can put stuff on there now.
Great.
Yeah, this is the perfect kind of thing to go on there.
Yes.
Yeah. Good, great.
Would the public like to comment on this item?
Thank you, Marty.
Julie Christie, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, first off, I have to thank Marty Granger. She's amazing, you guys. She's put a lot of her love and little spots in this town. And I already made a copy of it for PDF, sent it to Marty to congratulate her. But if you guys pass it, we will definitely help share it on social media. And I thought it was a great process to see our Public Safety Commission look at this twice and, and make the recommendation and bring it forward to you guys. So I look forward to you accepting it and, and a nice, safe and sane Fourth of July.
Great, thank you. Any further public comment before we, yes, go ahead, Marty?
Marty Granger, at first I thought that there were 300 of those copies made, but then Alex said he, he did it correctly. He did 150 for Fourth of July and 150 for New Year's Eve. So we only have 150. And the other thing I thought that was important, and I don't see it on there, I don't know why, but I thought the city, I mean, the, it was gonna be endorsed by the commission, the safety commission. I had that printed on one of the copies, which I thought was the final one. And I think they, I think it's important and people to know that this is not some random flyer, but that it's endorsed by the safety commission. Although putting your stuff on the back that you're saying probably makes that clear.
Are you saying, Marty, that you wanted something more added to the flyer? And this flyer says Fourth of July. It doesn't say New Year's, and so.
Yes, 300 copies were made. I think this is correct. Alex made 150 for Fourth of July. Because there's 150 kids, and we thought they were gonna go to kids, and 150 for the New Year's Eve.
And so is there a separate flyer that says New Year's Eve?
The only thing that's a difference, the New Year's Eve one says New Year's Eve. I don't have the.
It's a little bit different coloration and stuff. And then Erin McClure did say that she's waiting and ready to be notified, and she'll bring her donkey down to the park for the, the kids, and that she will give out these brochures and that she will talk to them about it. So she needs to be in the, in the mix.
Yeah, part of the discussion with Safety Commission was that, you know, if we teach the youngsters about how to be kind to their neighbors, that they can go home and educate their parents.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you very much. Adeline, go ahead.
Well.
Okay, as Chair of the Public Safety Commission, I just want to dovetail onto what Marty said. And we don't want to guilt kids out, because a lot of times it's not the kids are at fault. The parents are the ones that are buying the illegal fireworks, which are of course illegal in the whole state of California, but they go north or somewhere and get them. And yes, the school did not seem to be interested in doing this, but I think the summer recreation program would be a, a good way to get it out, and then on the website, as you've mentioned. And it isn't, it's, it's the same flyer except for the New Year's, it says New Year's Eve on it. And I do have the keys to the church, so I can ring the bell at 9:00 PM.
Adeline, do you mind if I ask you a quick question? Did the school say why they weren't interested in?
Yeah, I know, I talked.
Yeah, I know. I talked with the superintendent and she said she didn't think it was appropriate for the school. She thought it was more of a should be uh handled by the city. I didn't go directly to the school board because they moved their school board meeting. It was supposed to be the third, it was supposed to be on the fifteenth and they moved it up to the eighth. So I couldn't get on the agenda. Um, I might still try for New Year's Eve and and get it on the agenda for the board and see what happens.
Thank you. Sorry.
Another idea that um was kind of batted around by the Safety Commission was making lawn signs um of this flyer or something or something, you know, that says safe and sane. You know, or whatever kind of slogan uh we might come up with. So I don't know if if there's people interested in in trying to get something like that done. Um, you know, and that, and you know, we could just raise awareness a little bit with that. Um, we could have a sign out on the city hall lawn. Um, there might be some folks around town that wanna pluck a lawn sign, lawn sign in their yard.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that and that makes sense because then we don't have, you know, straight pieces of paper maybe flying around. We have something that we can actually reuse year after year. And it could just be stored somewhere and
Right.
and brought out every year.
And we can be pu- posting these flyers um and the ordinance on all the all the paper, you know, bulletin boards around town um as well, so.
And maybe once we get the Arts and Heritage Commission back up, they can help contribute to the yard signs.
Or we could just, you know, we could, if we wanted to, I don't know, we could maybe see if there's anybody who wants to donate money to a lawn sign, a lawn sign campaign, would that be Ketsawazki? Um, you know, it's not, it's not a ton of money, but we could probably get twenty lawn signs um in time for Fourth of July and and get them distributed around town. So.
I think that's a great idea.
All right. Do we wanna entertain a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Alex, yes, go ahead.
Supposedly, I I thought we were going to.
Do you want me to bring that to you or?
Okay.
Justin, do we have record? I, in the last meeting, we had recording in the audience. Is that still active?
No, not really. It it kinda halfway works, but it's best if they go up to the mic.
Okay. Thank you, Alex.
I um we had a plan at the Public Safety Commission to put the city ordinance regarding dogs uh on the back of that flyer. So the kids took it home, they could read, and it's a pretty good ordinance about uh that. I think it would help help that.
You mean the ordinance about fireworks? You said, you said dogs.
My memory is dogs, but that's eighty-three, so maybe it is fireworks.
Yeah, this is the fireworks.
Okay, and it is on the back, has it been printed? Okay. My mistake. The second item is um Maddie just walked in repaid me for paying for the flyers. I looked at that as a donation to the program. So I'd like to donate this to the either the Summer Youth Program or the program to get the yard signs going. So who do I give the thirty dollars to? The city manager?
That'd probably be best, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, sir.
It's only twenty dollars.
I'll match that, whatever it was.
Okay.
Put that in writing, Danny.
Well, the signs are gonna cost a whole lot more than forty bucks. It's true.
Thank you very much. So we uh let's get a motion to approve this.
I would move that we approve this flyer being used um in various manners around town um and also endorse uh the lawn sign idea if we can raise the funds to pay for it.
Second.
All right. Uh, Julie, sorry, go ahead.
I will add um for the donation part, um in the past, when we were voluntarily donating for Justin Services, we would just bring it in to City Hall and give it to the office clerk there, and maybe that's an option that could still be available. And I'm ready to hit send on a post. Let's pass this. Awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. All right, moving on to the next item, and I'm not gonna use numbers right now because my sheets are all off. Um, Commission vacancies and appointments. So we're gonna go ahead and do a review of the vacancies of the commission and current applicants to commissions. Danny, would you like to fill us in? Any further on this?
Yeah, so as you see there, we have three seats on the Arts and Heritage Commission to be filled. That is the bulk of who've applied in this current round of applications. Uh, you do have one vacancy on Economic Development. And then at one of your future meetings, we'll bring you your applications for that seat on the Planning Commission that is now newly open. Also like to note, um Lynn Glenn's application for Public Safety Commission uh was stuck to the back of one of these other ones. So we've got, put in the packet, but you guys have already appointed.
I was confused.
Uh, so apologies on that one.
Great. All right, so how do you guys wanna handle this? You wanna just go one by one and uh? Is?
Can we start with Linda Cooley for the Economic Development Commission?
Sure.
So I see Linda here, and Linda's been here a few, few meetings. We we uh we accidentally missed putting this on her last agenda, so.
All right. So is that a motion?
That is a, well, I'd love to hear from Linda.
Oh.
My name is Linda Cooley, and I'm specifically interested in helping out with economics because I run a business in Blue Lake. Not just in person, but manufacturing. And we focus on doing it sustainably and where we're good to our environment here in Blue Lake. And I think it is possible that all of our businesses can operate that way, and I think it's important. I also have a very special focus in tourism, and I think it's something that we need not just in the county, but in our city. I'm also involved with all of our county events, and I think getting other people from other cities in Humboldt County to come to Blue Lake is necessary to build more businesses here so they can stay here and thrive responsibly. Um, and also I just love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any one? Any further questions? Linda, do you wanna come back?
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Linda, how would you actively promote economic growth um affecting your businesses?
Um, I would reach out to other business owners to start. I have a lot of business owners that are already our customers. I also um attend a lot of economic development meetings statewide. Um, I also go to visit California tourism meetings. I would reach out specifically to businesses that fit in Blue Lake and work environmentally and physically responsible with what we have here, what we have to offer.
Great, thank you. Do you guys have any more questions for Linda?
Hmm. Excellent credentials.
Great. Does the public wish to comment on this appointment?
Very comprehensive application, yeah.
Julie, go ahead.
And really nice.
Yes, um, Linda, thank you so much for your application. I've got to know you over a little time, and I just think you're a stellar individual. You're gonna be a huge asset for our community. And I really look forward to having you on our Economic Development Commission. Thank you for your service.
Becky, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I would like to also thank Linda for stepping up and um for the economic development. I think she'd be a wonderful addition for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last call for public comment before we take it to council for consideration? All right. Does council wish to make a motion?
I'd love to. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Linda Cooley to our Economic Development Commission.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Last call for public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any of our other um appointees here? Or potential appointees to the commissions?
Don't see any. So I, you know, I wonder if the applicants were notified that that we would like them to attend the meeting when the potential appointments would take place. I think, I think that our, um, maybe we should amend our um our application to make that statement that um that when folks apply for a commission appointment, we ask them to watch the agenda packet and to attend the meeting where their appointment will be considered. And I think we've learned over time that when we appoint people that aren't at a meeting, they tend to not come to the commission meetings either. And so we end up appointing folks that don't show up. So um so for that reason, um, I would like to hold over these other two appointments uh for another meeting and and let those folks know that we'd like them to attend.
Danny, were they notified that they should attend or? I just don't know, you know, if it, you know, I know we're busy with a lot of things right now.
I wrote an email asking, asking office staff to notify, but I, it's entirely possible I didn't hit send on that email. Should I, as soon as you said it, I was like, I thought I asked for that, but um, I will make sure that they are notified and that we will get them for your next meeting.
I just really wanna get Arts and Heritage spun back up again, because at this point, I think like three or four months.
Well.
Have no Arts and Heritage.
So are you wanting to push?
What is, I don't wanna bend rules.
Barbara Russell has been here a bunch of times, and she's super excited about Arts and Heritage. So um, I would um I would go out on a limb for Barbara because I think she'll show up.
What does the public think on this matter? Is anyone who wants to comment on it? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Marty, did you wanna speak?
For some reason, I've always had this kind of negative feeling about the Arts and Heritage. Maybe I've been influenced by Matt too much, but um I, I liked his latest writing about people that are interested in this kind of thing and just come forth and I mean, like, does there have to be a commission? I, I like his idea of just people participating without it being a formal commission.
Any other public comment on this matter? Adeline, yes, go ahead.
I was really proud to be on the council and as mayor um forming this commission and uh it was decided, it was actually suggested by Diana Lynn, who's an artist locally in town, and um, I know she would really love to be on this commission, but her health prevents that from happening. I agree that Barbara Russell has been to a lot of meetings. She is very interested in our town. Um, and this Arts and Heritage also, the one of the things that was driving it was the historic homes in Blue Lake too. So that was another thing that we were thinking. But it has been going more in the direction of murals and art and that kind of thing, which is is good as well. So I agree with uh Mayor Sowazki that we need to get the Arts and Heritage Commission up again because they haven't met in a while. Um, I know there's a few things that are waiting for their approval or at least suggestions. There's a mural. Uh, now that the ramp is finished next to the library that has been suggested, having to do with books and that kind of thing. The uh bathroom at the town square is supposed to have uh murals on two sides with a bulletin board on the third. And the Arts and Heritage Commission had looked at a lot of designs, particularly from Patricia Senate, a local um artist we have here in town, and they had decided some things, but there's some things that really need to happen. So I'd, I would encourage the council to at least uh appoint Barbara and then, I don't know, this other person looks really qualified too. I don't know the person, but it looks like a qualified person. So I'd I encourage you to get the commission back up. It's a really good one for our town.
Thank you, Adeline. Julie, go ahead.
Hi, guys. Um, I've made this suggestion in the past because like, well, of course, when Planning Commission wasn't meeting forever, I couldn't make the suggestion then, but we've had a lapse with um Arts and Heritage pretty consistently over the last three years. So I've made the suggestion in the past that like um our prior speaker was just saying, we do have some stuff that could move forward, but we could dissolve within our Economic Commission and our Parks and Rec Commission um a lot of these projects. And the, while we have people that are willing to be on commissions, you know, I think we're better off to keep our main core commissions filled right now and let them fill the gap with projects like this. And then perhaps once we really are getting stuff moving, maybe we'll have a little bit more support to have more consistent Arts and Heritage commissioners. But the rapport for the last three years has been, it's been a struggle for that commission. And so my suggestion is perhaps for now, as you are the council and and kind of giving guidance to the commissions for what we as the public would like to see move forward, um, perhaps that recommendations can can be distributed between Economic and Parks and Rec for now is my suggestion. So stuff can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, go ahead.
Um, I just want to agree with with Julie. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I'd like to.
Let's call for public comment. Yes, go ahead.
Well, I wouldn't say whether you should or shouldn't form it. Uh, and you all know better in regards to all of that, but you know, heritage encompasses such a large uh you know, set of of values and things, uh including buildings and artifacts, but we have a wonderful Wiat heritage here too, and it might be a great way to be able to partner with the Ranteria uh and others uh in the Wiat uh culture that could bring some neat heritage things to to this, you know, in a value by reaching out to them and seeing if they might wanna be involved in such a commission as well. And then let's not forget the namesake of the town, Old Blue Lake, as a heritage. And uh as you know, we're working on uh trying to talk to the pri- the current owners about possibly being able to get that and restore the lake, which would be a wonderful thing heritage wise for the community. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, bringing it back to council for consideration. Appointment without them being here, or do we wanna wait till next meeting and have them come in? I feel what what's the rule of the council?
My thoughts are if we, if we appoint one, uh, we should consider appointing both applicants, the other person, Ruah Cindy Phillips seems very, very qualified. I have not met this person either, but um they've described very, very articulately of uh passion for art and heritage and um, respect for Blue Lake, and so I appreciate the application. So I would say either, you know, both or not until the next meeting. That's my thought.
Joyce?
Um, I um kind of appreciate what Julie had to say in and from a lot of different angles. One of them being that each one of these commission um meetings takes staff time, staff time to prepare agendas, staff time to deal with minutes and all the administrative stuff that goes with it. And um, and I think that in some ways, the Arts and Heritage Commission has been struggling for subject matter. And even when they did um make some decisions about, you know, doing some projects, like I believe they decided, yes, let's go ahead with the mural by the library, but they didn't find anybody to come forward to do the mural, uh was my understanding. And anyway, I I I think, I think potentially having, having these, the arts and the folks interested in Arts and Heritage be advisory members of the Economic Development Commission might serve a greater purpose in a sense.
Sounds like, I think, I think right now at this point, we're looking at the appointment. We're not applying, we're, we're not looking at retiring Arts and Heritage. That's my concern is that we are moving away from the appointment process. If we wanna look at other things later, that's fine, but I think at this point, we're looking specifically at the appointment process.
And invite them.
So do you want, do you wish to have them come forward in the future, or do you wish to have them?
I I'm really not in favor of appointing people that have not ap- attended meetings. So I think it's just every time we do it, it's just a disaster. So I prefer we didn't do it.
Uh, Kat, what is your?
You know, it's it's a mixed bag. Um, I do have a question for Danny. Do you know, how many people are we short on having a quorum?
For Arts and Heritage, you need one more person for a quorum.
Yeah. Did we ever interview Barbara Russell in any previous, previous meetings?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. That seems like a pretty requisite. You know, so while I'm, I'm inclined to say, yes, go ahead and do it, because I know that she's enthusiastic, but we're kind of establishing that process that they come in and we can ask questions and the public can too. Um, are we just two weeks away from our next meeting?
Yeah, you're only two weeks from your next meeting.
And then we would just kind of stay on the right side of the line. Be my thought. But maybe we can make an extra um appeal to them to let them know to come and understand that you.
I haven't noted.
All right, so it sounds like we're. All right, so it sounds like we're, we're not totally sure, but probably it sounds like the council wants to stick with what we've already solidified as our policy is that the people are going to come forward. So it sounds like we want to delay the appointments until they can come forward. Is that correct?
Correct. Differ.
Yes.
All right, so do we want to, do we need to make a motion then to defer it?
You don't really need to, just direct staff to bring it back. We're good.
All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item.
Looks like we have somebody on the.
Oh, thank you. Somebody's stuck in the waiting room.
Um, so moving on to the next item, uh, HCD's response letter. Danny Burkhart, would you like to comment on this one?
Yes, let me also text Gary to let him know that he's, his item.
Looks like he's on.
Yes, he's on, but he's mute. Oh, there he is. He hears, he hears me. He sees. Like, just in case he couldn't hear me. Um, so uh, you guys directed us at your last meeting to send a response to the HCD letter that we received that wanted a response on May 30th. So we sent them by May 30th. The response that you uh, outlined in your last meeting uh, that gave a timeline, they wrote back to us asking if we could move the housing element in particular, uh, a couple of months. If we could get that passed by the end of the year. I think mostly that's due through the LEAP grant that's been used towards that, and they want to close that grant out at the end of the year and to prevent us from having to scramble to identify other exam expenses that could qualify for that program. They're just like, how about you just finish your housing?
It was at the one we have a February date on it.
Yes, that's when you have uh, the 1231, and they want you to have it done uh, ideally by November. It looks like October or November.
Do you have a different letter than we do?
The one on the back there?
I thought this just looked like they wanted us to get both of those things within the um, 2025 calendar year.
It says, could, could you be, could they propose they be sped up to allow for adoption and submission of the housing element to be targeted for a month or two sooner?
And right now, housing element is on 1231?
Yes. That's, that was what the date you guys gave, and then the, the HI rezoning. For February, which that doesn't need to move because they understand that is a very complex process and it will take time.
Is the problem that if we submit it the end of December, they can't take an official action that then puts LEAP in jeopardy?
That's, that is how it works, yes.
Gary, do you want to weigh in here at all?
Um, yeah, I have the same question as Councilmember Skifani. Um, I, I recommend that we ask for clarification, just to be crystal clear that they were only referring to adoption and submission of the housing element versus the rezoning action. Uh, we could assume that they're fine with the rezoning action being done by February 2026, but I've learned over the years not to assume, you know, what agencies are thinking and to ask for clarification. So that would be my first recommendation is to make sure we're on the same page, that they are referring specifically to just adoption and submission of the housing element being done a month or two sooner.
Great.
I understand the need for clarity, because we don't want to get caught.
Gary, do they provide, if they want this expedited, can they provide us any legal assistance or, or do a question answer session with us or? Are, are you the one who takes, takes all that on?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I don't know if they're willing to attend council meetings. We could certainly ask them if their staff's available to do that. Um, we have not asked them to do that up to this date, but they've certainly been available to provide technical assistance to city staff um, throughout the process.
Great. Council have any questions um, for staff before we open this up to the public? All right, is the public wish to comment on this item? Julie Christie, go ahead.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Gary, for weighing in on that. I think getting clarification is, is a good, is a good course of action right now. And I also agree with seeing if they can help um, review how we have presented the housing element thus far and um, correlation with our general plan. Um, they do have great examples on HCD's website that I've mentioned in the past that when we're presenting our housing element again, I would just suggest um, using that format and perhaps reaching out to them in a way that we can have that type of format like other municipalities use. That's been probably the biggest problem is that every time it's presented, it's just been a presentation, not actually going itemizing any additions, um, subtractions that has been consistent. Maybe it happened like actually the one that originally had some edits isn't on the webpage anymore. That got taken off months ago. So um, let's catch up, and if they want us to speed it up, maybe we just need to work on that presentation material. And then I think a lot more people are going to be confident and comfortable, and we can actually finally have a planning commission and a, and a, and a council that actually maybe puts two cents in kindly. There has been zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any further comment from the public on this item? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Uh, well, it, it seems interesting. A Blue Lake uh, citizen mentioned to me last week that the same people who have been blaming the last council for not passing the housing element are the same people who would have complained if we had this kind of darned if you do and darned if you don't. Having said this, I, I do think we need to take this seriously. The state tells you to do something and you need to comply with it. So let's move this forward and let's get some housing in Blue Lake, affordable housing in Blue Lake.
Thank you. Becky, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so um, I want to thank you all for working quickly um, with this process since you've had very little time to do so. And um, you know, since the city has been sent numerous letters previously since oh, 2021, if not earlier, for not being in compliance, I'm just glad that you guys are working toward being there and um, doing what you need to do. And um, that's all I think anybody's ever asked, so. Um, but that being said, um, thank you again. Um, I think you are all doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Uh, further public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move it back to council for consideration.
This is not an act, well, direct step. I would like to just go ahead with Gary's recommendation, get absolute clarity and bring this back at our next meeting.
Okay. I, I, I would agree with that, and so um, either Gary or would it be Danny doing?
Direct me and then I handle it.
Okay, great.
We're all learning. All right, so um, Danny, do you want to go ahead and just let us know exactly what it is that?
Yes, we'll do. We'll bring it back.
Okay. Gary, do you have any other final comments on that? Just want to.
The, the second part uh, obviously is you want to consider the request for speeding it up and think about your potential options in responding to that. You know, I mean, one option is you could just say, hey, no, that's the schedule. We believe we can meet. We're committed to it. We want to move forward with this and see how they respond. The other is, okay, maybe we could speed it up a month. So you want to think about that as well, because we'll probably hear back pretty quickly on that clarification we're requesting, so.
Are we supposed to tell you now that we are eager to work with them on this item or on this topic, or are you talking about next meeting?
I mean, I would recommend you provide direction to staff now on your response, but that's entirely up to you.
Do we wish to amend our directive to Danny?
I think right now we're just looking at getting that clarification, what they intend, correct?
And if they, okay, so for argument's sake, if they come back and say, yes, housing element, one or two months earlier, can you do it? What is your likely response going to be?
I, I think we could try to do one month. I don't think we should try to do two, because I think we might really fail on that one. So I'd like to keep it in the realm of absolutely attainable and uh, and not try to speed it up more than a month.
I feel the best we could do would be one month.
I'd say we're doing our best to meet the timelines that.
All right, so I sense there's a general consensus about this answer that we did one month, maybe we can do, and that's about as much as we're willing to give.
I, I think the timeline that we already provided is sort of where we're at. We get the clarification, can better understand. What I'm looking at, we moved up a month, and then we're right in the middle, you know, also at a holiday. So, you know, if I was going to be moving up, I'd move it a couple of weeks into December, rather than right at the end of the month, so that we're between the holidays, so we could really focus on it and not get caught up in missed time with families or have somebody else traveling.
So you'd say like December 15th?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah. Somewhere.
Well, so we don't know.
We could even pick our, um, we could pick our December, our early December meeting. Um, which would be December 9th. If we were going to speed it up, maybe, maybe say by the 12th of December, which would be the end of the week. Um, after what would be our first meeting of the month. Potentially.
I would just say we, we'll do our best.
Or that, yeah. I think you just do that.
I mean, that is an acceptable response. I can always just say, hey, we'll do our best to, to work with the.
We're not purposely delaying it, is what I would say.
I think that's kind of what they just want to make sure of. And also, again, the considerations of the grant. We would have to go and spend sta- staff time rei- reevaluating and reidentifying expenses that could be used for that to fulfill the grant monies that have already spent. Just to keep that on your radar.
I thought that had already been um, direction provided to staff to um, to Gary to, to do that already.
Gary doesn't do your expenses. I do, and so does Vicky. So we're currently working on your budget. So right now, that's not something I can I can do for you at this current time.
I don't recall that we directed that. I, I know that we discussed that that was going to be necessary if we didn't pass this in the calendar year to accommodate the requirement of the grants, that the grant monies be spent on this.
Then I guess I misremember.
Um, so uh, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I think I think we're on the right track. We'll just get really clear and do the best we can.
And keep that communication open.
Absolutely.
Great. All right, the public wish to comment uh, on this item before we move on? All right, we're moving on to the next item. State of California's Water Resource Control Board has adopted an updated cross connection control policy handbook, which uh, necessitates, uh, necessitates an update on the city's cross connection control. Uh, Danny, would you like to uh, solicit any more on that?
Uh, basically, it's, it's basically the simplest thing. We're just coming into compliance with updated state regulations. We have an ordinance already on the books. This uh, the outlined changes in red are what is what would change in the ordinance. As you can see, it's not a whole terrible lot there. Um, and the uh, technically, you could pass this today as it is coming into current, into uh, to coincide with state regulations. You could choose to pass this today for a regular ordinance that's brand new and not, you know, that is of our own design, you would not be able to do that, just for clarification. When you're coming into line with these things, you can skip a couple of steps.
So we don't need a second reading?
You don't technically need a second reading if you don't want to have one. If you would like to have one uh, because you wish to make changes or something, then we can go that route. But essentially, everything that's in here is as required by the new cost connection control policy handbook. And nothing extra, only as much as we're required to comply.
I trust that you have made the revisions.
Yeah. If, while Gary's still available, I was wondering if he could just um, address a, a couple of questions on that?
Uh, this is not really in Gary's.
Oh, it's not, okay.
House. This is more of a Glenn and I thing. Yeah, public works.
On that, I see a lot of things had gone from air gap to reduce pressure.
Yes.
And those devices, um, without getting all to the technical aspect of it, how does that translate into dollars for people who might have a well or uh, that secondary source?
It can be kind of spendy to do that change. That's why most, most of the uh, the regulations outline a two-year period to come into compliance with something that is uh, non-compliant currently. And so you have two years to get into compliance with that. And then uh, the only exception to that is if the device fails and you're at risk of cross-contamination of the public water supply, then you have 30 to 60 days to come correct, depending on the admit, the advice of the Public Works Superintendent. Uh, you know, how big of a threat are you? To the city's water supply?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Don't need to look at it twice when they make a motion.
There's a public, no public. Does the public wish to comment on this item?
Pretty exciting stuff.
All right. Bring it back to council. Do you guys wish to uh, pass this now or wait for another reading?
I mean, unless we're expecting another amendment, I don't, I, it feels like we could probably move it forward now.
I would agree.
Let's do it.
Yep, I would move that we um, adopt um, these amendments tonight, as presented.
We have a first?
Second.
Last call for public comment? Seeing them, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem. This is, that's, that's been a couple of months in the doings, right there.
All right, moving on to item number 12, I believe. Sorry, according to this documentation. 13, okay, sorry.
Oh, it's a stretch break.
Yes, time for your stretch break.
Okay, great.
I decided we're scheduling those from now on.
Welcome back, everybody, from our break. Moving on to the next item, which is item number 12. Why is it so odd? Why is, okay.
Your stretch break didn't have a paper.
So are we on the plant, the Planning Commission re- recently approved a cup for the Powers Creek Restoration Project?
That one.
Okay, great. Danny, would you like to go ahead and fill us in on this one?
All right, so recently Powers Creek Restoration Project was uh, issued a uh, conditional use permit for uh, restoring parts of Powers Creek in phases one, two, and three. And one of the one of the issues I would say that came up is that uh, that the little pink polygon that you have on your map that's in this packet is where, that's in the power plant property there. That's where the proposed location for putting spoils is uh, slated uh, as council. That's your property. You can choose to not have that use there if you choose not to, and there are alternative options for the spoils. That was just the most convenient one. So uh, if you choose not to have it there, that's within your, your choices to make.
Council have questions for staff?
Of course, a couple of them.
That'd be great.
Is that on the chip pile that's there?
It's right next to the chip.
Okay. And then do they put a barrier between the soil and the spoils coming in?
That's going to be a Gary question.
Okay.
Probably.
How long would it be there? And if it's in raising rainy season, does it get tarp? And who would pay for that? And who pays to remove it?
Gary, are you the?
Just waiting to be prompted. Um, so yeah, no, those are all great questions. Um, and really, this is an opportunity for the council to consider this proposal and decide whether you want the property used. And if you were to agree, these questions you're asking could be requirements or conditions that you place on the use of the city property. So um, you know, I believe members of Bonn-Bon Watership Council are in attendance and uh, would like to discuss this proposal with you further and would be able to potentially answer some of these questions. Um, regarding uh, winterization, um, yes, I mean, in the city's grading ordinance as well as other state regulations, uh, there would be requirements to have erosion control and, and coverage and things of that nature to make sure that, you know, sediment isn't running off the site and stuff like that. And there are currently some stormwater controls in place at the site, but probably haven't been maintained in years and would need to be uh, you know, added to or improved and that type of thing. But um, anyway, uh, I would probably encourage you um, to kind of lay out all your questions and then invite the applicant to address what they can. And if some of it's relevant to staff, I can attempt to address some as well.
So one of my questions is what is the um, expected volume of uh, of the spoils? Sure. And um, and just so that we can get some sort of a, a visual of what that means, do we have an estimated volume of the fuel pile that's currently on the site? And what percentage of that volume with the spoils? And what percentage of that volume would the spoils occupy? Maybe we all, we all have a sense of how big the fuel pile is, right? So my thought is, you know, how many thousands of cubic yards is that fuel pile? And what is your spoils pile going to look like next to it?
Um, so first of all, I want to say thank you all for creating the dialogue and the opportunity to talk about it. I, at least I, I don't know the answer to the question about the fuels and the chips. Um, that's outside my scope of expertise, but I can tell you that there are three phases to the project. And the first phase is from the rancheria at, um. About one thousand seven hundred and seven linear feet upstream. And that, that first phase is about twenty-eight thousand cubic yards of material. Um, and at this point, um, we had worked with the city planner and the previous city manager. And that had been something that was just. You guys can do this. And we were like, okay, great. So we're coming to a new situation where I haven't had time to answer the question about the fuels area. But I do know that our volume is twenty-eight thousand in the first phase. And then phase two and three is an additional ten thousand, so about thirty-eight thousand cubic yards. Ultimately, over a period of three to four years will be moved out of Powers Creek and somewhere. So, um, that said. What, I guess the question you want to know is what the footprint is of the soil, the soil that's going to be removed? Is that, does that where we're focusing or?
I guess for me, I have no concept of what twenty-eight thousand cubic yards looks like.
Don?
Um, well, if we looked at it in, in terms of acre feet, um, we're talking twenty-eight thousand. Um, we would be looking at a, a less than one acre foot. So it'd be about an acre, about a foot deep. Or sorry, sorry, it would be actually more than one acre. Um, yeah. Yeah, it would be more, more like ten acres, sorry.
Okay, so it's, so it'd be one acre, ten feet high.
Yeah.
So this is eight feet. So one acre, ten feet high. So two feet above my head.
For dump trucks, which is the ten yard.
I, I know what a ten yard dump truck looks like.
Dump truck, they're talking twenty-eight hundred, ten yards dump truck. Twenty-eight hundred times ten, twenty-eight thou.
And, and I, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but Gary, the site has, has the ability to contain that without. Causing the chips to be part of that situation. The, the, the soil spoils will be separate from the pile of chips. Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, that was the idea. We were trying to mix those materials because if, uh, you know, obviously it was going to be reused, you would want those materials to be separate from each other.
Right, and, and so because I knew this meeting was coming up. I had conversations with other folks in the community who handled material and Gary Johnston, who. A majority of that material is coming from his property, has said that he can handle most of that material. That means reprocessing it and storing it. So there's another option on the table if the city decides that they don't want that. I think the previous decisions that were made before now. Were about possibly using some of that material to level out some of the industrial zone or the, you know, the. Area that was going to be developed between the distillery and the new pump track. So, um, we, we, we just want to work with the city and, and give you what you need, but don't give you any problems.
I'm totally in favor of that.
I, I was gonna ask, what's the long-term plan? Like, once we have it there, is it just like, use it when we can or?
Yeah, I mean, there are some landowners along this bank on this side who we had done some field tours and they were interested. And without, um, a rating permit, you can use, you can use, what is it, fifty cubic yards? And they could use that to level up their side of the creeks if they wanted to. So it would be available if the city wanted to allow that to be happen for people to, to use. And then I've been talking with, um, the Mariah's family about possibly using it in some of their areas if they want to level up some of their fields that. Pedal as long as there's a delineation made for what is a wetland and what is not, because we don't want to put soil where there's a. A wetland, we want to do it all the right way. And so that's, that's the idea behind handling the excavated material.
I have a question, may I? First, your name, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dave Searle. I didn't announce that. Um, and I'm the founder of, uh, what was once Mad River Alliance. And then a few years ago, our board decided to honor the name that the tribe had in the area. One of the names, there are many names of the river, which is something that we had partnered with them.
Great. I'm, I'm wondering on the spoils themselves, um, do we anticipate, uh, the quality of the material? Is it like a mixed aggregate? Is it clay? Do we know like it's, it's percolation pipe?
Yeah, um, I think, well, Don did some, some samples of it. Um, we do know that we will be required to do soil samples for hydrocarbons and, uh, other background heavy metals and things like that. Before it's even moved, but Don, you did some samples with Cal Poly, right?
Yeah, I had a, a student, um, an engineering student from Cal Poly and we collected.
You come up to the microphone, otherwise your words are not recorded.
Yeah, I'm Don Allen with Bottle but Watershed Council. Um, we did do three sediment samples, um, on the city's reach. And, uh, it was a, a lot of fines in there, like I want to say, I don't remember the exact numbers, but ten to twenty percent. Fines being like one millimeter, uh, or so in size, um. You know, and then there was gravel and cobble in there, but it's a lot of fine material, which depending on what you're doing, you know, would be. Suitable for some uses, like I could see where some people might not want the cobble. Um, that can be processed, you can crush it, then, you know, make it into product. Um, but it is possible, uh, Pepe wasn't, uh, Gary Johnson wasn't too interested in using it. Or he, he wasn't sure. He said, you know, he thinks it was a lot of fines.
That was then.
That was then.
Just last week, he said he looked it up.
Yeah, so things change over time. Yeah, um. You know, and, and so, uh, I'm going to suggest, you know, like a, a possible motion would be for a conditional disposal on, uh. Gary Johnson's property, um, if he does not take it all, or a conditional. Disposal on the city's property, if Pepe doesn't take it all. And, uh, it would be weatherized, uh, you know, during the winter, you know. Erosion control, straw mulch and that kind of stuff to inquire logs around the perimeter to make sure, you know, none of that sediment. Leaves the site. It's basically contained on site. So that would be an option that was actually suggested to me. Uh, to suggest to you as a, as one possible option, because. Uh, we are in a, under a bit of a time crunch. We've got, you know, less than a month to finalize the, the project, then our funding, uh. Ends basically, the program ends.
Uh, for the planning part.
For the planning phase, yeah.
We did just do a tour with California Department of Fish and Wildlife's Fisheries Restoration Program. On June second, and we had our whole crew out and they had their whole crew out. In fact, some people came from out of town. And we were really happy with the, the meeting, the field tour. Um, and at the end of it, a couple of people came up to us and said, we really want to fund this. So felt good. We don't know if we'll get the funding, but it seems like since there's proportional funding, that the funding is on the way. Twenty twenty-six would be the year that we would begin. So we have time to still define how we want to handle the material. But we definitely wanted to do what works best for the city, for sure.
There's so a whole nother year before you start digging.
Yeah, we've got some time because the funding cycle, the way it goes as we applied, April seventeenth, we just got our, our technical review in June. And we won't know until November, probably, or even December, if we've been funded. It takes them that long to process all the activities.
Is there any chance of contaminants being in the soil and then we'd be responsible for them?
Yeah, the last thing we would want to do is introduce contaminants into the river or the creeks. So we're going to be testing it and making sure that it's handled appropriately. If, if that comes up, we'll stop haul movement of soil. And then determine the best actions.
Okay, so, so basically you would halt moving them.
Yeah.
The dirt there after.
So this soil, if there was an area that needed to be graded, um, or, or contoured in some fashion. This soil would be appropriate for that or really not?
Yeah, with it, you know, depending, like I said, you know, if. We can't say for sure that all the, the soil would be the same as this, the three samples that we took. So that's, you know, fifteen gallons worth of soil out of. You know, twenty-eight thousand cubic yards. So it's, it's a pretty miniscule amount, but we did find, you know, about twenty percent were fines. So, you know, if we assume that that same ratio applied, we'd have, you know, fifty-six hundred cubic yards of. Fairly fine material, like sandy material, sandy silty material, which, you know, could have a lot of good uses. You know, gravel and cobble, that's maybe a little more difficult for people to use unless you're a gravel processor.
Gary can reprocess as much right there on site. And then we're, you know, we're, we're overexcavating, so we are going to return some of the cobbles and some of the, um, roughened. Coarse gravel for spawning areas. So I think we're introducing twenty-six, uh, large wood structures. And then they'll be spawning areas down through most of those.
Mm-hmm, and if there are local, um, landowners that are able to take some of this, is, does the project transported to that location?
I don't think that.
Well, I think we, we have to, I, in our permits, and Gary can speak to this better than me, but we have to identify where the spoils are going to go. And, uh, you know, we can't place them in a wetland. Um, that's probably like the, the main restriction. And then just financially, we can't afford to haul it too far. So that's why we're looking. For, you know, a site as close to the project as possible.
Sure.
And then long-term, if like hypothetically, I mean, how long would that dirt remain there after the fact? Would the city be responsible for getting rid of it? Or would you guys help out with that?
Want to leave anybody hanging. So, you know, as, as we're going down the road. We've been talking to State Cultural Conservancy, Wildlife Conservation Board, Cowfish and Wildlife, and, um.
Department of Water Resources.
Department of Water Resources, and all four of those agencies have interest and are vested in looking at this. We've been invited by Wildlife Conservation Board to. Formulate a pre-proposal, which would then lead to a proposal. Department of Water Resources is another funding. They were the funders for the planning. And they want to see us finish. They're really excited about implementing, so that we, we can find the money to deal with the issue. We can write that into those grants.
Great. Any other questions from council?
I would just say that I think that if we had a plan for the, for the soils, we'd love to have it, you know, but I, and maybe a year from now, we will. Um, you know, I, my concern would be that we complicate the problem we already have by putting it where you're proposing. Um, you know, we're trying to get rid of that fuel pile and, uh, and I think by bringing in that volume of, of soil, that could. Very easily complicate that problem. But, um, but I would be really happy to have it if. If we come up with a plan for, for that site that could use it there. And I, in my imagination, I'm a landscaper, so, um, I've done a lot of, um, that sort of thing, building up. Areas and contouring and developing, um, flat properties into not flat properties. So, um, so I think about that and I, I'm, my wheels are spinning, I'm thinking possibilities. Um, and if we could come up with something like that, I'd love to have it.
As a former farmer, I, I know how long as chips have been there and I bet there's a lot of good soil.
I'm sure there is, yes.
And you guys said you are on a time crunch right now to get this done?
We, we really need to bring the planning to completion so that the permitting agencies can know how to decide. And if, if there was something that pleased the city in a way that it didn't impede. The city's plans to get chips out. And there could be a temporary approval of something that allows us to put a certain volume there. Because it's unknown right now how much can be processed. We do need a place to put some of it, if it was contingent on us assuring that we would find a solution. Within a certain period of time, you know, and, and, and that sort of reasoning, it seems like. We would, we would all get what we needed. So trying to find that win-win solution for everybody would be ideal.
Am I hearing two different things that one would be a place to have put some of it temporarily?
Right.
And some would be to put it forever or forever our?
Well, we want to find a home for our lovely spoils.
Okay.
That's the goal is to work with the local ranchers. Like I, I understand that, I don't know the name, that there's a rancher down on the bottom. I just heard about the other day, that's, that's looking for something down in the bottom, but to haul that is going to be very pricey, right? So if we had, uh, identified a few places like this site and Pepe's site. Where the people who want it can come and arrange to get it, and we can write into our grant perhaps. As we get the implementation funded, which we know Bratford is right there, then we can facilitate that. But if we can't get to the finish line, we can't get the new chunk of money. It's a, it's a catch point.
Yeah.
We'll also be sorting that material on site too, so it's like, it's not necessarily. You know, we have limits on what, how much we can sort it, but, uh, as Dave said, we are going to reuse some of that, put it back in for spawning gravels. And that does require sorting it out into the size of spawning gravel that Coho Salmon and Steelhead Trout like to use. So, you know, there, there will be some sorting and it's possible that we could, uh, you know. Filter out the fines and, you know, like all the, the other larger rock to be processed by somebody like Gary Johnson.
Yeah, I would hope that, um, maybe staff or particularly Gary could look at this. Because all soils aren't created equal and some will percolate well, others will compact well, and others will just be a problem forever. And, you know, we'd hate for us to saddle ourselves to something that can't produce the results that we would hope for. But it's not for me to make that determination on what is or isn't useful to us, but is that something? Um, Danny, Gary, do you think that staff might be able to look out and give sort of parameters of? What might be usable to the city?
We really won't know until we go, because as many core samples as you take. Uh, you know, that's only indicative of that area of the channel. And so basically, we would know once we see exactly what comes out of the channel, how and how much, and how much gets put back in.
I'm coming from a different lens. I'm coming from the lens of saying, if we were choosing soils, what might it look like? What parameters might that, that soil fall into? And then have samples come up, maybe that fits. Um, and of course, I mean, we're not going to made to order soil delivery here. Um, but at least we have a bit of an expectation of what we could.
If you don't fix the order, it can't be filled, right?
That's right.
And we know that for the samples we took were further towards the confluence, further towards where the creek comes into the, the. Matt or the bottle. And, um, the further up towards the culverts or towards Hatchery Road. Maybe more coarser materials, but like Danny said, where and how many samples you get gives you a better and better vision of what's there. And we all know prior to sixty-four, this was all a libeal floodplain with a mixture of large trees in it and probably some soil as well. But I would imagine over time, if you were to look at the profile of all of this, there's probably quite a bit of gravel in there. And, and I believe that we could probably put a lot of that to use locally. So I'm hoping we can, again, find that. That magic win-win solution tonight, so that the city can at least allow us. An opportunity to possibly use some of their landscape and, and then we work out with other, uh, people like Pepe or maybe.
I'm thinking Kerna.
Gary, do you want to weigh in at all? Any further?
Um, sure, only to maybe address what Cat was saying, um, that sure, we could provide some information. You know, from our geology folks about, you know, here's the types of materials that could come out of here. And here's their potential uses for city projects or just in general, you know, things like that. But as, as everybody noted, you, you really don't know what you're going to get until you, you do your excavation, you see what there is. But we certainly can identify what potential uses could be for the different types of material. I do believe it's expected that most of the larger cobble and aggregate would be reused in the channel. Um, and it's really mostly fine sand, things like that, that would be, um, the spoils piles.
Great. Any further questions from council before we open up the public?
Just one more clarifying, um, so you're saying that as of now, Gary says he'll take all of it? But maybe he can't handle a little.
When I heard that this was going to be on the agenda, I started calling and I'm going to find out what would be a solution, because I'm a solution-based person. And Gary said, I can take the material.
Okay.
So it's, it's really identifying on his parcel. Where would it go within his five hundred year floodplain, so that we're not in the one hundred year floodplain? And identifying that site. I don't know how much room he has, and that's why I'm like, maybe it would be helpful if the city had. The ability to take some of this material, then we have our options available so that we're working with the best possible solution for the community.
So his floodplain designation is different than the power plant land, is that correct?
Uh, Gary?
I, I can answer that question. There's a combination of mapped floodplain, um, or, or designations, I should say, uh, by FEMA. Where he stores most of his aggregate and where he does his aggregate processing is in the five hundred year floodplain, which is. No special requirements for, for being in there. Other parts of the property are in the, uh, hundred year. floodplain or special flood hazard area. And there's limitations and analysis required if you're going to place fill in there, and that would just be costs. It would have to be paid for by implementation funding. And the main thing is that if you're gonna place fill in the hundred year floodplain, you look at any impacts of the base flood elevation. So you can design the placement of the fill ways that really wouldn't have an impact, but that would be additional analysis that would need to occur in order to use that area.
And the power plant site is in the hundred year floodplain, is that correct?
Most of the area down there, what we're now calling the Powers Creek District, is in the five hundred year floodplain because it is protected by the Matt River levee.
Okay, thank you.
And I think when we wrote our grant to California Department Fish and Wildlife, that we just had a tour on June second about, we didn't know this was going to be something that came up. So that wasn't written into that grant. We could probably um work with the granting agency if we, you know, are awarded the grant to amend the budget. But that's a whole process. And and or we could seek funds from the state State Cultural Conservancy or another non-agency that has funding. However, that adds another layer to the case, right? So ideally, you know, if there's a way to find something works fairly.
Is there any way to get a confirmation from Gary that he's actually willing to take that on?
I'm here. I spoke with him. I I don't know, you know, other than we could call him right now.
So you're saying you'd like something you'd write?
I mean, I I I would like some, I mean, it it would help if there was some kind of guarantee. Or an MOU, something something like that.
You know, he's a handshake guy, right? I mean, uh I've worked on and off with him for years and he seems to always fulfill the agreements that we have. So I don't feel like I wouldn't trust it.
If I could add to that, landowner's property is gonna be used for any aspect of this project, has to sign landowner agreements. Uh that's required for receiving funding. So that's kind of baked into the process.
We do have a ten-year access agreement with him signed. And I'm pretty sure we can get him to sign anything that we we ask.
Well, I'm thinking about some different properties, just I'm pastoring cattle on the other side of the river and thinking, oh, this spot here is not gonna be good for winter. But when I think about all that dirt, I'm like, oh, a piece of this could become suitable for winter pasture if, you know, we brought in a few few dump truck loads.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's ideal, right?
You know, I don't own the property, but I could talk to the landowner.
The one one caveat is that we would have to delineate it for wetlands. Uh so we'd have to make sure there's no wetland plants. And since we're out of the coastal zone, I believe it's three parameter. Gary can correct me. But you you look at the soils, you look at the hydrology, and you look at the plants, and you have to fulfill all three to be a wetland. Is that correct, Gary?
It is outside of coastal. Using the U S Army Corps of Engineers three parameter wetland definition. So yeah, basically, all of the agencies across the board, you can't place the spoils in delineated wetlands, sensitive habitat areas, things like that. And when you're identifying your spoils locations, you have to do some analysis to that effect. So something like the power plant site, you know, doesn't really have sensitive habitat or or wetlands. It's an industrial site. Much of Gary's site is the same way. Uh it's a lot of cobble. It drains very well. It doesn't really develop wetlands. So that would be the lens at which, you know, the applicant would be looking at potential spoils locations, areas where you don't have those environmental constraints.
Great. Do you guys mind if we open up to the public for comment? All right, to the public which to comment on, yeah, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Uh Kent, this is a wonderful project. I strongly support us moving forward tonight in a way you can move forward as quick as we can because they are on time for straight. I think if you were to make a condition of approval to the thing, it would be that any spoils they did put on the city property would be be removed uh in a timely manner at their cost. Uh just to to let you know, a lot of your cost in materials is digging it up, putting it in a truck, to haul it and put it on a site, and then pay Kernan twenty dollars cubic yard later to pick that up and load it and haul it again makes no sense. So as long as you were going forward with them with just a caveat of condition that they if they do need to put anything on your property, which most likely they won't, that they will remove that at at your demand or at your request within ninety days of being notified or something like that at their cost. That covers the city. We have no future cost. They move forward with their project. And again, I strongly support working with them, working with Supervisor Madrone. We wanna we wanna hopefully have another phase here that puts Blue Lake back in in the town there. And so I I strongly support you enabling them to move forward with just a simple condition on their approval. They could speak to whether they find that acceptable or not. I think they hopefully will.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
And I too had the opportunity to speak to you down by the creek. Um I think it's a great project. My concern would be the city one more time getting into something that then if funding dries up or there's any kind of problem, we're left cleaning up something that's as tall as this building, the ceiling in here and covers an entire acre possibly. So just to be really careful with the language in that to make sure that, you know, I mean, we had promises of things being cleaned up before, and now we're trying to figure out how to do it. So just to make sure the language reflects the true ability to be able to clean it up.
Great, thank you. Any other comment before we move up to Zoom? Yes, go ahead.
I've been thinking a lot about this project and I know quite a bit about it and um said something similar to this at the planning commission meeting, which wasn't the right place to say it. I missed them because they just deal with permitting. But there's a lot more sediment in the creek since last year, a lot more. So much came down. I don't know where it came from. That's another conversation because it's gonna keep coming down. And that's the city's problem. It's not the water shake council's problem. It's our problem. As you all know, my place flooded and I live two and a half blocks from the creek. I don't live on the creek. I didn't build my house on the creek. It was infrastructure failure at the end of Charton and because the creek was clogged just right down from there and and down and down and down. I mean, it's it's totally choked. It's a completely neglected creek. It's a drainage for the watershed that comes up from down from the hill. It's a flood hazard uh and it's only getting worse. Flooding after twenty-eight years, twice in one year. That's our sediment. It goes through our town. And this is a big project, but it's not really gonna solve the problem of sediment coming in. So I think we just need to build it into our planning about how to deal with stuff that comes down through the creek and is a flood hazard. Essentially, it's a drainage right now. It's an it's infrastructure for drainage from the water that comes down through town. And it's not working. And so it's been flooding. And what I'm hearing is you're kind of putting that on this project. And this project is is um what can I say? It's 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 finite in that they're gonna come in, there's gonna be this ten-year period, and then they're done. And then it's up to us. So like we have to start now thinking about how much catch-up we have to do. And with with the watershed council's help, support with this project, we will we'll get a big bump. And then so I we have to come up with a solution about what to do with the debris that comes through there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Um Steve Madrone, uh both as a county supervisor, but also I've got a forty-year history in Powers Creek and working to restore it and stuff like that. And I'm really grateful to the Bottom Up Watership Council. Uh when Adeline and I were on the council together, I was doing projects here in town on Powers Creek. I like to call it magical Powers Creek, but whatever, that's a different story. Um it's this is a great project. And and the last speaker is correct. You know, there's different elements of responsibility or opportunity, right? And you're lucky to have a group of people who stepped up to try and work with your city planner, your city engineer and staff to come up with a project to actually increase flood retention. By by taking all that out, you open up enough room in the creek to have more water before it spills down Charton and everything else, right? So it has all those benefits. Will they last forever? No. You know, these are ongoing things that you have to look at and you know, is there erosion control needs up slope? For the most part, not. But naturally, the streams are cutting into the hillsides over time, and they're gonna deliver materials. But this is a good one. And, you know, I think one way to craft this, you gotta remember, there's this timeline. They're trying to wrap up a report within a month to be able to then go to the next phase and get the funding to actually implement all of it. So when you look at that timeline, one suggestion might be that ideally Pepe takes it all, right? Except for, as as Gary said, a lot of the cobble that wants to go back in the stream for spawning habitat, right? And so what you end up with is a lot of fines, but he can process those and sell those and stuff. Those are of great value. Sandy sandy soils with a little bit of silt in there uh can be incredible for fill material where you're building. Or you could use certain soils for, you know, agricultural purposes and stuff. But again, depending on where you end up taking it, getting those wetland clearances and other things creates another complication and the hauling costs. So you might say something like, well, it'd be great if Pepe took it all, but if some of it needs to go on city property, we think that's a great opportunity for the city because you may very well have fill needs out there in your industrial park where you're trying to get rid of the old ultra power and rate it smooth and flat, you know, and do different things to make them attractable for economic development that your new committee is gonna be working on and stuff. So I actually see it as a boon for the city, that you have this opportunity where you might be at a place a year or a year and a half when they're doing this work to be able to say, gosh, we would like ten thousand yards of this kind of material that's coming out of here. And we're clear to put it there. So you could condition it where you say, if Pepe doesn't take it all, here are the conditions that we would need you to meet to put it on our program. And Gary can help you. You know, you could direct staff to put that together for you. And then you're in a position to where you're only accepting it as if if it's a benefit to you, and you've allowed them the one-month timeline to get their project, you know, to the to the entities that will consider funding. So just a suggestion.
Great, thank you. All right, any other public comments? All right, Julie, go ahead.
Yep, Julie Christie, I have to thank staff for having Zoom. I wouldn't be able to participate with my schedule without it. Um I do know tonight your guys' decision is based off okaying storage on um our public property there. Um looking at the packet with the site map, there is another storage area outlined, just like Pepe's yard um adjacent to the current bridge from the arena. That area wasn't discussed very much this evening. Um I did caution the planning commission during their approval of the conditional use permit that they should be laying out some conditions in the way that stuff's not coming back to you guys. I feel like there was a lot of negligence with conditions within this project, giving the funding verification of it, which was flood mitigation and Coho salmon restoration. I feel like we're falling short on those goals with doing this in the phased-out project that we're doing it. Flood mitigation should have been the number one priority with a start to ending from the whole project site to mitigate floodwaters, to prepare for further projects um of development next summer. We received funding back in like two thousand nineteen for like over six hundred grand to be working on this. And then we get shoved to planning commission. They have to have a special meeting. They're not even ready for it. And now we are still having to work with it with you guys. So I do know there is an appeal process. I do know that we can have additional conditional use um additions. But I think at this point in time, we need oversight on this project. I'd advise our um council in the proper format to move forward with perhaps an ad hoc um or some sort of oversight that is continuance with this with this um project. And that would be my biggest advice for tonight. Also, the yardage stuff, I trust Pepe. He's got it. Like, uh use his advice and definitely resource materials. But I think we're going at this backwards and we need to think about our flooding for next winter now, not later, and work with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh last call for public comment? Seeing none, let's bring it back to council.
Well, I'm the liaison for the Bottom Up project. And if if it is appropriate um to form an ad hoc, I could be part of that. Just wanted to say that. But it seems like there's a lot of mitigation um conversation, things that a lot of people are coming up with as far as solutions. And I think that it would be with those conditions, with those mitigations in place, I think that it would be appropriate for these soils to be placed. Your time is up, Michelle. Time to go. Anyway. Yeah, I just I was just gonna say I would be in favor of the storage and with the conditions that other people have spoken about. Similarly, I think um if Danny agreed in having staff, as in Gary, as Steve said, developing uh what would be acceptable. As in, if it stayed there, we would be able to come up with a good use for it, not have to try to scramble to figure out what to do with it. And then have legal maybe come up with some terms as far as what happens if, you know, what if we have this? Or we have more than we can use, or if we are storing more with the understanding that it's going to move on. So just have legal kind of put something out. But you know, I support it. I mean, it's great to get this moving along again and get it cleaned out. So yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards that as well. I so my understanding then is that we need to designate these areas right now so you can finish your process by the end of June. And then in the interim period of time between now or between the end of June and when you start construction, you could be identifying other potential sites and doing those water or wetland studies to see if some of those places could receive the spoils permanently. Is that a part of this? Or not really?
Yeah, I think what we're saying is the same thing is we need to identify a place to put the spoils. We initially thought we had that answered. We wrote one grant. We're on the way to finishing one and getting another. We're gonna need a little time to write more grants, to write it into the implementation phase for the additional uh conditions. So that I think working with an ad hoc committee over the next year, I I invite that. I think that's a great idea. I reached out to the other day because I saw their name was on 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 the list for us. So and I think I reached out to John as well because you're the alternate, I think. So I think that's the way to move forward. I do have to say, stepping back, looking at time from twenty nineteen forward, we had different people leading the charge on that project and we hit COVID as well. So there were a lot of stumbling blocks that we went through. And I think I want to apologize for my organization because we we weren't stepping up to the plate enough with the city. We thought that we were. But now I understand the process needs to have more attention. So moving forward, under whatever conditions the city approves tonight or in the next little bit, I'm totally agreeable with that. I think that we want to do what everyone wants. And also to point out that we are here to help relieve the flood frequency and to improve the habitat for the creek. And that's really our goal and always been our goal.
What would the timeline be on mitigating the flood frequency? Because I think that's a concern of a lot of our citizens.
I know. It would be nice to be able to get our permits. Um and I don't know if this is correct, Don, but I think if we get our permits, we may be able to work with agency to do at least some veg clearing this coming winter, which would would be a big help as far as the willows downstream of that gathering ridge at the the horse arena are what are basically choking the channel. And and fortunately, in twenty-six, we're gonna rip it all out once the funding comes.
And is it gonna be like a barren landscape down there after?
Look, it's different. Like my first job with RCA was with this guy in two thousand two or three. And I thought, yeah, I get to finally do restoration. And I thought I'd be like planting trees and and he hands me a chainsaw. This is go cut all those trees down. So it's um it's it but if you go to the Hammond Trail now and look at that site and what a white creek, it looks like a park with spruce trees thicker than my waist. And it's just beautiful. So that's what this is gonna end up looking like. We have an incredible And it's just beautiful. So that's what this is going to end up looking like. We have an incredible planting palette. Of over 20,000 native plants and five planting zones across seven and a half acres. The landscape in 20 years is going to be a legacy that this whole room is going to be part of. It gets dirty, but it's going to look great in about 10 years. But the first four or five are going to be, you know, we'll be out there watering and weeding. And to look at the long term, I said this at the planning commission meeting. I began my first project as a high school student in 1983 in Sonoma County on Adobe Creek. And you can look that up there. You know, Google Miracle on Adobe Creek. We started a project as high school students. We didn't even know what the word restoration was. There are high school kids still working on that project. It's the only conservation hatchery run by high school students in the lower 48 states. And we have Rose Johansson, one of our staff reaching out to Blue Lake School. And they're going to develop a service learning project for the middle school kids. So that. In hand with working with Karina, we're going to build and strengthen the community. And the goal is just like when you're raising a child, is to grow that child up so they don't need you, so that I step away. And there's the Powers Creek stewards doing what needs to be done. So that's a long-term vision. We're going to handle that soil.
One question for you, Dave. So what is the minimum that you would need from council tonight that would help you in this one month timeline?
Think it would be helpful if the council could find a way to identify a place where we could put spoils that Pepe can't handle. With a condition on it being managed for, you know, all the things that are required by the state water quality control board. And a maybe a term limit and a way to tie us in as partners on managing that. Big pile of soil.
So in that, that could be either the pile is there permanently or temporary?
I would say it's going to have to be temporary because the goal is to, for at least I understand, the goal is to get rid of the power plant and re. Reset that area for some other development in the future, right? Do you, does the city have a timeline on that development?
No, not right now.
So I think if we're in an ad hoc situation where we work with you. We're going to be writing the grants. And in the last grant, we were co-sponsored with the city and I would think that we could write that into the process. Right? So does that answer your question? I think we don't want to see it set there forever. No one does.
Well, I think what what I'm trying to determine is for your purposes, you need to be able to designate a site. To your funders to say sites are designated. And they don't, and they're potential sites, but they're designated, but it doesn't necessarily commit us to accepting a certain amount of soil.
Right, yeah, exactly. I have identified for the first phase 28,000 cubic yards. And we will let our permitting agents know that we have a couple of sites to store spoils we cannot process. But we don't know that volume because we don't know how much we can process and use. Does that sound correct? I mean, that's.
You know what I'm trying to get at? What can we provide tonight without over committing ourselves since we don't have legal here, since we haven't been able to do a greater review of all this?
Right, yeah, you want to make sure that you're not committing to something that you can't deal with. And I agree.
Yeah, but we want to help you. I mean, I think everybody.
So yeah, the suggestion was to approve conditional disposal of whatever soil Pepe does not accept. And the condition would be that it would be weatherized or erosion control would be installed on it for any. Wet season considerations.
With a timeline, maybe perhaps added to that, we could say with a consultation with the council and the city's ad hoc group. Every six months, just determine where is that going or what is the city's plan? I don't, you know, I don't know how that part looks, but. I think a timeline limit would be helpful for you. So that there is like, this isn't going to set you forever. Because we all know what happened with Ultra Power. They just left you guys hanging. You know, we don't, we're not like that. We're not, we're, we're in it for everybody, for the whole community here.
So I think Steve, did you have some idea about language or is that exactly what was just shared again here?
I kind of read what he wrote.
I'm not professionally working with him, but we've worked together for a long time. Don and I for 50 years.
We started our careers in restoration on Powers Creek in 1983.
Literally. And Don and I have done over two or 300 stream restoration projects. One of the things we consistently see. Is this idea like Dave said on Widow White Creek, when we started the project up there along the Hammond Trail in McKinneyville. The stream is completely choked and had very few conifers or, you know, canopy, right? So with the question about what's the long-term plan for managing this sediment? Because it's going to keep coming down. Well, a free-flowing stream manages its sediment and flushes it to the river. And then the guys out of the river manage it. Cobble and gravel supplies and the rest of it. What happens is you get, because of the lack of tall canopy. In particular conifers, when you have almost all hardwoods, alder and willow. The sun comes in and it grows blackberry and Himalaya vine and coyote brush and all these small things. That then want to drop in and choke to create these log jams that then cause all the sediment to dump out. And then the stream wants to divert down Shartan and all these other lowline slew areas that are down here below, you know, the avenue here. So the proposal, as Dave said, is to, yeah, at first they're going to be ripping a lot of stuff out. Because that's what you need to do to be able to take a entrenched channel and turn it into a channel that has a floodplain. And it meanders and has point bars, as they call them and stuff. And then you replanted all and a big part of that planting is conifers. And as those conifers grow up in 20 or 30 years, they shade out all that other stuff that is what's causing all the stuff to drop out in the system. So what we see with these streams is 10, 20, 30 years with that canopy, you get open channels. And the stream just wants to move that material right on down. Some of it will sort because of the nature of hydraulics, but anyway, just wanted to give you that reference for. It is a long-term piece to the solution. Correct, because they got to 10 years. Then this is good at 25 or 30. What's going on for another 10 after this 10? And these guys are going to be working on it. That's with the stewards of Powers Creek. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, to answer your question, I think ideally if we could identify a couple of sites that if Pepe can't take the material. We can say we can place this here temporarily. The city can work with us to identify the uses. And once you've identified the uses and identified what you want, we get rid of what you don't want.
Anybody get that?
Yeah, I think Danny did. I would motion that.
What Dave said.
I'm working on a motion here. Working on a motion right here. So. I would move that we receive the spoils for storage in the industrial area for a term not to exceed two years. And the, and. And agree that the bottom watershed council is responsible for removing what we are unable to use.
Can I just say the project will be phased in 26, 27, and 28? So can we go three?
That's optimistic.
That is optimistic.
Well, I think five years is going to shoot us in the foot. I think that if we are at all successful in moving forward with any imaginings that we have for that property. Five years is gonna, is gonna blow it for us. So I think three years is probably, you know.
Can I just suggest that that be three years from the time the material is placed there?
Yeah, which would be 26. 26, 27, 28. And we have an ad hoc committee if something needs to be amended.
We don't have an ad hoc committee yet. We haven't, we haven't.
You want to add to that something like if the city has a need or desire to. To change or amend this, we have that dialogue to do it. So three years.
So, so if if the term needed to be shortened, how much time would you need? How much notice would you need that the that the soil needed to be removed?
I would think it would take us a year to identify funding and really get this, because it comes out of the funding cycle. Agencies don't move fast with funding. It takes a year from the time you apply to get the money in the bank. So I think if we were warned in 20, so if we start implementing in 26 and the city comes up with a project in 27. We would be pushing to find funding somewhere or an alternative way to deal with whatever's on that site. So that it can be moved by 27 and then we have an alternative site and everything for the next phase. See what I'm saying?
I say that is we're, we're not guaranteed the funding. We applied. We got through the first phase with the resurrection grass program. It's very competitive.
This is the cart before the horse thinking all of this. But at this point, a three-year would be sufficient at this point. And I would think that if we can have, if you want an add caveat of. If there's some emergency or something that comes up, a plan that comes up that the city needs to act on, they can inform the nonprofit. To begin turning wheels, to begin moving that sediment or spoils back if you agree on turn, if you want to add that. Just so the city has room to negotiate and will, you know, I mean, that's right.
Sure. It just gets.
A little convoluted motion.
Pretty convoluted, yeah, yeah.
We can make separate motions if that's what we need to do. And I mean, we don't have our attorney here tonight, but is this something that you guys would be bonded? For that removal of any of the materials if it doesn't work out? I'm a little concerned. Oh, that's a no, okay.
That's not generally, you don't get funded for that. And since we're relying on grass. Yeah, there, even contingency is difficult to get funded in grass and you have to kind of write it in. You can't spell it out as like 30% contingency. You just have to kind of. Make your estimates so that they can handle contingencies.
Well, we could designate the sites for an as-yet undetermined amount of materials for as as-yet undetermined amount of time. Would that still serve your purposes and allow us to revisit that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How does that work for you guys? I'd rather have the flexibility. I'm just trying to get you guys on your way with this without their binding, yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Is that a motion?
Sure, let's call out a motion. I make a motion that the city. Accept these designated sites for the storage of an undetermined or as-yet determined amount of materials. To be stored for as-yet an undetermined amount of time. To receive spoils from the Powers Creek cleanup.
With conditions of mitigation, winterization, protection, all of that. I think that we've said it enough times. How does it sound so far, Danny?
So I have city is, we have a motion for the city to accept the sites for receiving spoils from the restoration project. With conditions for erosion control for an undetermined amount of time and an undetermined amount of volume. Is that correct?
Sorry, if I could just suggest you might say a maximum because the maximum we're looking at is 37,000 cubic yards over three phases.
Okay.
And and we're, so you want us to state that we're going to, we're willing to take all of it. But you're thinking that Gary is going to be our, your primary storage site and we're only going to take your overflow.
That's what we're thinking now, yeah.
But you need somebody to put it in writing that they'll take all of it.
A year ago, we had originally been informed by our co-sponsor of the city that they would take all of it. A few weeks ago, we were informed that that might not be the case. So we. We were hoping, you know, that Gary will take all of it. He said he will take all of it. He probably will. If I know Gary, he knows how to deal with with that material. So, you know, I didn't have time to get something in writing like John suggested, but you know. We need a place that Gary can't take. So I don't know what that volume is, but the max volume is 38,000 cubic yards. By the end of the project, which would be 2028. So the first phase, it's going to be. What is it? 28,000? And then the next two phases is just another 10,000. So. All of the material is going to be handled by Gary when he can't deal with, needs to go somewhere. The maximum amount that that would be would be 38,000 cubic yards. So what Don suggested is put a max on it. So that we don't bring in more material. We wouldn't do that, but I don't know, was that a good?
I think, I, I prefer the as-yet undetermined amount of material because you put in that maximum. If they say says no and everybody else says no, and we kind of have made a motion that says that, well, we pretty much would take all of it up to this amount. That's an enormous amount of soil that we might not be able to do much with.
Can we revisit this and give you an exact amount in the near future so that we can facilitate this project? But also make sure that Pepe is going to be taking the materials?
We have until the end of the month.
I guess one of my, one of the things that I want to say right now to the city is. It has been pointed out that this is a project that's going to reduce flooding for your citizens. And I think that that's something. Yeah, we wouldn't have chosen to do this project if the city wasn't our partner.
I apologize. You know, just it's a short time frame and we're trying to make it, we're trying to protect the city, but also. You're trying to protect the city, so.
It's also something that is going to benefit your city.
Right.
And so if the city is not willing to take some of the material, I think that that's also the city saying we don't want to help the situation. And I don't want to put you guys in a situation where you have to do something. We're here to help deal with the situation because we're the nonprofit partnered with the city to get planning funds to do it. Now we're in a place where our implementation is being held back a little bit. But we do have till the end of September or to the end of this month. I'm sorry, not November.
So on this map, there's, there's the spot in the, in the power plant site, there's the spot. At the end of Mondaway, that's outlined. There's a spot in Gary Johnson's area and then there's a spot across Hatchery Road. Are those all just staging areas for equipment and other things? Or were those identified as potential places for the spoils to be stored?
Those are just staging.
Are for staging. The two that we were, that we're currently considering is Pepe's and the chip line. Gary, you want to speak to that? Because SHN developed some of those plans. And so I, unfortunately. They don't have an engineer tonight to talk about those details.
Yeah, I can address that.
Those other ones, as you know, noted on the map are just temporary staging areas. Where they would have equipment and storage of other materials. That's where they'd be doing their sorting so they could get the cobble and other rock out for reuse. As part of the design, but that would just be temporary staging areas during construction activity.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, you need, and we couldn't do like a percent, a guaranteed percentage of the project. It's like all or nothing, it sounds like.
So for 10 years, the city had been the co-sponsor of this project since the very beginning. And it wasn't until just recently that there was a change in the way things were going to be handled. So I'm having to adjust here tonight to a situation that's kind of outside my control. I'd like to do the city a favor and I'm asking for a favor from the city.
Great, thank you.
So. I think the not to exceed 38,000. For a term not to exceed, can we not exceed three years? Or we got to go longer? Is three years okay?
Three years from the time it's placed.
Three years for the time, the beginning of construction. Does that work?
What if we did four years total from now?
I'm hoping in a year from now, we have other.
I am confident that this is going to be used. I, I'm pretty. Sorry, I, I know we have to like make this official, but.
Yeah, but not to exceed 38,000.
No, I, I'm not feeling it because that is a huge amount of material. And I, I am not against this project whatsoever. It's great. I don't need to be sold on conifers and removal of blackberries and how it's going to help with the floodwaters. Absolutely down for that. But our capacity to deal with that much soil. And if the other partner in this is Gary and he says no, then we have all of that is kind of what we're saying tonight. I'm trying to get them what they need for their deadline this month. And allow our engineer to come up with some information and allow our attorney to come up with some information before we overcommit by way of motion. So really want to help the watershed council get to where they need to be for this deadline. Um, but there's still.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the amount of, we have twenty two acres out there. And even if we spread that out. On ten of those acres, what did we say? Ten acres, one foot?
So that's right. I, I recalculated that, um, cause that was off the top of my head. Seventeen acre feet is the total that we need. Over three phases.
You won't see all of that material in one year.
Right. Anyway, I have an, I have a design for that property in my head and we'd use all of it. But that's just crazy me. But, so I'm not worried about it.
So we, we did have the cat's original motion. Did we have a second to that?
I don't think so. Yeah.
Okay, we'll just.
I'll withdraw that motion and let you guys move on.
Motion's withdrawn then.
Thank you for my recalling.
So do we have a second?
I would, I, I would move that we receive the spoils from the project for storage in the industrial area for. Volume not to exceed thirty eight thousand cubic yards for a term not to exceed. Four years from the start of construction. Sorry?
I second. We have comments.
We have a first and a second. Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead. Would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, John. I didn't use all my time prior, hoping that you guys made a motion and we could chime back in. Um, I'm, I'm feeling like we do need to move forward with good faith. However, I think you're giving this way too big of a window span. Um, we have the right and ability to make conditions that this is under review annually. Um, Dave spoke that funding is annually. I think we should be reviewing and checking in and renewing in good faith. Yearly. Um, that keeps both parties responsible and liable. Like. We are donating the property and the liability of it, and they are donating through services. And grants the restoration. However, look at the footprint that's gonna be happening there with the bike park. Um, where are these kids gonna be getting in and out with their bikes? And so we have a lot of footprint stuff to look at as well, but I would keep this as a conditional use permit that's reviewed yearly. And that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
That's reasonable.
Alright, thank you, Julie.
So is that the conditional use permit for the whole project or the soil storage? What are we talking about?
The, the motion you made with the yearly check in would be an added, added friendly amendment to that.
Okay. So add to that, add to that then, that, um. That this arran, this agreement will be reviewed annually.
Yeah.
For feasibility.
Yeah, that makes sense. That then that way we can check in about where we're at, what funding we need and what partnerships we have.
Review for feasibility annually.
Do we need a second then?
Yeah, do you accept that amendment?
I accept your amendment, amendment.
For sure.
We have a first and a second. We're gonna get through this. First and second, uh, another call for public comment on the amendment. Seeing none, let's bring it back to council for vote. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
One nay.
Yeah.
Alright, so it passes three to one.
I absolutely support the project. I think that we've gone too far down the road with the term. So. No love lost on.
I can understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Alright, moving on to the next item. Thank you. Uh, mine says fourteen, bud. That's funny. FY twenty five, twenty six budget discussion.
So in front of you, you have a fun little packet. We're gonna start with just the water and sewer for tonight because we're already at eight nineteen here. Um, Scott and I will be working through the weekend to bring you the rest of your budget before your next meeting. Um, basically what's happening right now is that we are about, uh. Sixty thousand dollars over budget for the water fund currently, and that is mostly due to the giant leaks. We had, uh, on the boulevard and so that, uh, with the construction fees and staff and on call and everything. That put us about sixty K over, um, where we normally are at. And so, uh, for the budget for twenty five, twenty six, we are, uh. We're estimating a little bit under what we came in at this year because, uh, we're not expecting to have. A giant other leak in the same area and most of the other infrastructure issues, uh, that could come up would not be quite that spendy. Um, so that's where we're at with water fund. As far as sewer fund is concerned, uh, with the changes in costs of labor. We had to bring up on call and rounds pay to parity with, uh, overtime. You're not allowed to underpay overtime activities. So, uh, that resulted in about a hundred and twenty K, uh, we still have a excess in that fund. So we're still on track with our budget for sewer fund. Luckily, we haven't had any huge. Issues that require ginormous costly repairs with the sewer, uh, thing. So, so we have avoided catastrophe there. Uh, so, and so we're looking at a projection. Um, you know. Roughly the same as last year's budget for the budget for the sewer this year. Uh, not a huge change. From year to year here. Um, if you had specific questions about any of the items on this, I just wanted to try and kind of keep it brief, show you where we're at now. This is not your budget in final form by any means. That's why this is just a discussion item. And, uh, just kind of wanted to like bring you up to speed with where we're at. And like I said, we'll have a, your complete package for you ahead of your next meeting.
Great.
So it looks like we're expecting to be, um, running at a deficit for water and at a surplus for sewer.
Yes, and that's kind of typical just simply because water transmission and distribution and those things tend to be a little more costly. And when you throw in the leaks, then you just gotta skyrocket those figures. So we, we tried to strike a balance there.
So how much, what was the cost of those leak repairs?
It was about sixty thousand dollars.
That was, so that's in there.
Not, not total for the, that one, but over, over the entire last fiscal year basis, we spent sixty on repairs.
So my understanding is that when we have a repair that's in excess of five thousand dollars.
We're gonna capitalize that. Working with Scott to capitalize some of these expenditures. So this, these numbers will change by the next time you see them. There's still some calculations we're doing, but this was basically getting labor pulled into there and like, you know, that accounting for. Increases in health insurance, that's under the, you know, employee benefits part on your expenditures. We've accounted for changes in health insurance, risk management insurance, PG and E rates. Uh, I mean, there's a whole bunch of, you know, rates that we have to calculate into this. That change and are, and some of those are projections rather than totals because, uh, some of the bodies that give us these projections have not yet passed. Their budget for the fiscal year. So.
So you're gonna use capital improvement funds, but do we even have that much?
We have some to use for that and we can pull from Leif if we really, really, really need to.
Leif?
Leif we use kind of for contingencies. It's our, it's our investment fund and that's what we use to, for money that. We're not currently obligated to spend. It's sitting in a contingency fund earning interest. So that it's, our money is working for us instead of just sitting there.
So our operations numbers could look better once you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so this could look better the next time you see it. I just wanted to prepare you for, you know, this is what it looks like right now.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate the dialogue because you're explaining things that make a lot of sense. The one thing that is sticking out for me is that. For the sewer fund, the employee benefits, we paid less than what was projected. Uh, for our budget for employee benefits of expenditures. Instead of one twenty one, we paid.
One twelve, yes. Um, part of that was because we lost an employee that was full time and benefited and that position was not filled. Um, so that would account for some of it. And, um. I think one of the employees had dropped in benefits because they've reduced their hours potentially, if I remember correctly. Uh, but that's mostly attributed to one loss of staff that was not replaced.
Yeah, great. Yeah, it looks like we, and other expenses, repairs and maintenance. And contracted professional services, we kind of bet it on the water fund.
Yeah, that's, yeah, unfortunately, that's where it goes. Uh, and, and those things are really kind of impossible to plan ahead for. You never know what you're gonna get until you get it. Like, and if you watch home renovation shows, you don't know what's in those walls till you open the walls up and you find all sorts of surprises you didn't know existed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Since they're gonna have water and sewer, and I think the Ranteria is gonna be coming along with your own system here.
Their current, well, there's been changes to how their effluent meter is handled. So we previously charged them based. Fully on their serv, uh, use of water. And usually when you're doing water sewer billing, billing. You're accounting that anything that's going in the taps is essentially gonna go down the drains. Things that are exceptions to that are like summer watering rules and things like that. So, you know, it's oftentimes municipalities will make adjustments saying. We know that you're not putting all that water down the drain because you're watering your lawn or your garden or whatever. So we're gonna cap that at your winter usage so that you know that we know you're not putting it all in the drain. Right now, what's happening with Blue Lake Ranteria is that we're gonna be metering their effluent. So because. All of the water that they pull from the tap isn't necessarily going down the drain. But the typical calculations don't work quite as well for a commercial property of that scale. And so that's why we went with an affluent meter so that we'll be billing them directly for their actual affluent charges rather than. A guesstimation of water coming out of the system and into their taps.
So have they switched over to, off of our water system?
No.
Not, do you have a date?
I don't see, I don't know that that's in the scope of this conversation. Uh, and I don't, I don't know the dates or anything of that nature for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Alright, does the public wish to speak on the side?
Uh, I really liked what I just heard there, um. About the affluent metering. Uh, this was a huge issue over in Glendale, um, when they put in their sewer system. So fifteen, twenty years ago, there was a known sewage problem coming out of Larson Heights, the area up above, uh, the old mill site there where Royal Gold is. Cause of clay hard pans. So there was a lot of failing septic systems. And so they were forced by the water board to put in a sewer system because they're right above the rainy wells. It provides all our drinking water. For eighty, eighty percent of the county. Um, but Fieldbrook Valley said, no, thank you because they knew that having a sewer system. Along with a water system would increase growth. And so they said, no, thank you on the sewer system. But now what's happening in Fieldbrook is that. If you buy a new property, almost all those old septic systems are failing because of extremely high water tables in the Fieldbrook Valley in the bottom. And so they're having to do Wisconsin mounds and some people are being denied not to be able to build it all, which I believe is a take, but. You know, there's some weird things going on in this realm. Uh, but back to Glendale, when it first was installed, they've got three lift stations to take their sewage to Arcata. They gotta lift it three times to get it to Arcata, which is going underwater with Seal Rise. So that's a problem. And so what happened in Glendale was they were using the year round water use to bill them for sewer. And in Glendale, people grow a lot of gardens and orchards and all kinds of things. And so it wasn't fair. The water, the sewer bill. Separate from water was five and six hundred dollars a month. Can you imagine your sewer bill? Being five or six hundred a month? And so bottom line is they had to adjust that. I worked with the, the district. Board as well as the constituents there and, uh, they ended up using March as an average flow in their case. To try and determine what they should charge for sewer, but they're still paying two and three hundred dollars a month, which is a lot of money. There may be other solutions there, but we can talk about that another day. But I applaud you for your efforts to try and provide a fair rate for sewage usage.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? None on Zoom? Alright, move it back to count. Any further question or comments? Alright. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item. That would be item number sixteen. HCSO animal control contracts. Danny, would you like to fill us in on this one?
Uh, council, excuse me, Mayor Protem Scipani, uh, brought this up. Um, I believe it was intended to be brought before, but I fell off my radar. And so we're bringing it to you now. Um, the county sheriff's office has provided a contract council, um, for animal control services, which would be separate from what we already pay for. Which is our animal shelter contributions. This would provide, uh. You know, on call, basically animal control services through the sheriff's office. And the, it's an annual contract and the cost for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six would be about ninety five hundred dollars. And this is not currently budgeted for in this year's budget, but if this is approved, obviously we will add it to the budget for twenty five, twenty six. And, uh, the contract does have a, uh, service period for the contract of July first twenty five to June thirtieth of twenty twenty nine. Which is when that would come up for original. So you have a five year service period there or four year service period, excuse me.
And I believe each year you would, um, you know, there could be a, a cost adjustment. And so, you know, um. And these contracts have a provision, um, you know, sixty day written notice. They can be terminated by either party. So, um, so we're not obligated to do it until twenty twenty nine. But as we currently don't have anybody on staff who can, who is trained. Um, to be a dog catcher. And, um. And looking into, um, going through the process of having somebody trained was very expensive. Um, so this, this proposal at this price point. I feel is extremely reasonable and what it'll do currently, if somebody calls animal control and says, I got a loose dog in my yard or. Um, you know, some dog down the street just bit me. Animal control, unless there is a, um, active threat. Um, when the call is made, they will not respond unless they go through city hall first to get authorization to respond. So, um, essentially we don't have, um. We don't have direct animal control services in, in town currently and haven't for quite a few years. Um, but if we do this, then anytime somebody needs help, um, with an animal situation, um, they can call for help. And they can, you know, they can report dangerous situations. They can, um. Report, you know, they can, um, ask for animal control to come out and take a report of an incident. Um, and, and animal control is able to respond directly. Um, they can also come and enforce our ordinances, um, in terms of licensing leash laws. You know, whatever, um, whatever we would ask them to help with. Currently, we don't have any enforcement. Um, and as a city, we don't, even if we wanted to cite people for having a dog off lead or having a dog at large. We don't have a mechanism for, uh, collecting a fine or enforcing that. But if we, if we, um, contract with animal control. They are that mechanism. They can cite and they can, um, do the enforcement action.
Is this twenty four hours?
Yes. And, and I think on the weekends, they have pretty limited service, but like if there's a dangerous situation or an active threat.
They'll respond.
Um, the sheriff's deputies will respond.
The sheriff's deputies or the dog catchers?
The deputies, because I don't believe that there's a dog catcher on duty, um, all weekends. But I could be wrong about that.
So do we know what, um. What, what's the, what's the demand? What's the volume? And I know that there's been a history, but I don't know. How we have been, is there a way of tracking? Probably not incidents, unless you just took a poll of people around, but. Since we have not had any animal control, how? How, how busy are they gonna be doing this?
Honestly, I don't know. And there are no records that we can refer to. I can, I can share a couple of stories with you. Um, about two and a half years ago, um, somebody that we all know, Verta Pitts, um, her elderly dog was attacked in his backyard. By a roaming dog and it took her three days to get animal control out there to take a report. Um, a few months later, uh, one of our. Um, a few months later, uh, one of our residents was attacked by two pit bulls down by the post office. Um, he was down on the ground with two pit bulls on his throat and somebody jumped out of a truck. They got those dogs off of him and the guy that helped him out got bit. Um, and the gentleman on the ground, um, was rather traumatized and injured by that situation. And after that situation, a number of people spoke about that situation and said, yeah, I've been worried about those dogs for weeks. I haven't been walking on that side of the street for a long time because of those dogs. And so my personal opinion of that situation is that if we had animal control at that time and people felt like they could call somebody and report what they thought was a hazardous situation, that attack might have been avoided. And so to me, um, you know, and discussing that situation later, um, after, you know, long after it happened, somebody came and spoke here, somebody who works for, um, public health came and told us that when somebody is bitten by dogs that are not, that cannot be shown to have been rabies vaccinated, they have to get the rabies vaccine and that process costs about twenty thousand dollars.
How long have we not had animal control here?
Decades. Since we haven't had a police.
Okay.
Yeah, since two thousand eight. And I do want to point out, I just was reading over in part two on page one of the contract. It specifies that this service is, uh, going to include regular random control as available during normal hours of service for assigned animal control personnel. So this is not twenty-four seven, this is during their normal service hours.
Okay.
Does this help our insurance rates at all by having a dog? No.
No, we don't have any claims in the last five years against the city for animal control issues. Um, I, I did look at that before this meeting. And as far as the call log that I get from the sheriff, there's virtually all of the calls are disturbance type calls and not animal related calls. I think there's been probably two of those in the last four months that I looked at the records for.
And just to confirm, if we did have a dog issue, we could contact city hall and then report it to you and then you could contact the sheriff.
Under our current law enforcement contract, that things that are emerg- immediate threats are covered. Um, so this would just kind of be an enhancement to that, basically, as far as I understand it.
What are your thoughts and recommendations?
I mean, personally, I, the anecdotal evidence suggests that, that, you know, that we would want to do something like this. But as far as like the stats on what I have available, doesn't suggest that there's really that great a need in the city to spend ten thousand dollars a year on it. The two, Scifani's point, though, that, that, you know, it is much cheaper to pay for this than to hire our own dog catcher and try and train them. It is very much cheaper to go this route if we decide we need to have these services available.
And anytime that, um, we do bring in animal control, we pay them by the hour.
Yes.
And that rate is significant.
And then on page eight, or three. Um, revenue for animal licenses, dog pound impound fees will not be included in the total net expenses since this revenue is charged by jurisdiction for its, uh, by, okay, with the residence, this is like per capita.
Right, yeah. We, we handle our own dog licensing. This just says that they would enforce that, uh, if people were not licensed. But it's usually enforcement of non-licensed dogs is by co- is complaint driven anyway. It's not usually something they go looking for.
Right. And I will say that in my conversations with the, um, the director at the shelter, there, um, don't believe every call that's made to animal control gets captured in your, in the sheriff's log. Because people will call animal control specifically for an animal complaint. Um, and, um, and then those calls were either authorized by city hall or not authorized by city hall. Um, but I don't, unless there's a, an active ongoing threat where somebody, you know, says there's a dog that's, you know, got me pinned against a wall. If the dog wanders off, nobody comes. If there's an active ongoing threat, then nine-one-one is triggered and somebody can, can respond to that. But, um,
And just to clarify, sorry, this doesn't, this, this agreement doesn't have anything to do with our sheriff's agreement. It's completely separate.
This is a completely separate agreement.
It doesn't have anything to do with our contract right now.
Yeah, no, nothing to do with law enforcement or the shelter. This is its own separate entity deal.
Do you, do you have a number of how much we paid for, um, for animal control services in the last couple of years?
I don't have a number for that. I can try and find something, though.
I don't have it either. I should have looked that up, but, um, but we will, you know, when we do need services, we pay for it by the hour. And if we had this. Then it's already covered. It's all covered. Except possibly for dangerous dog impounding and boarding. I think that might be separate still.
That's part of the shelter agreement. Dangerous animal boarding and impounding, uh, that's part of the shelter agreement if I recall correctly.
And that's in our sheriff's contract?
That's a separate contract also. So there's a law enforcement contract that is specifically law enforcement services for people. And then there's the animal shelter contract for our contributions to the shelter and its services. This was its own thing just for animal control personnel to come to the city to enforce animal control issues.
It's like a little a la carte.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I think the, the dangerous dog thing is separate even then. It's, um, it's under our shelter agreement, but I think we get charged extra for that. So again, if we can, if we can avoid a bite, if by enforcement, we can make the situation here safer, we can avoid a bite situation, the dog doesn't end up getting impounded. And, um, you know, an in a rabies quarantine situation.
Right.
Um, so.
Any further questions before we open up to public? I'd like to get some public feat, public feedback on this one. Yes, go ahead.
Becca Collins, um, I've been in several instances with pit bulls out on the levee. Several times, Bob's almost had to pull out and use his mace on him. Um, we were down walking our little dogs out of a little yorkie. And this guy comes out with a great big water wire and lets it loose. Oh, and they always tell you, he's really friendly, he won't hurt your dogs. And I always say to him, until he does. They're really friendly until they're not. And it's like, we never know who to call. I mean, who do you call? I didn't know we could call the city and have them do something about it. And it just seems like since the lease, leash laws come up and been there more people for a while were really good about it. And then you, when we were down, come across the river and this guy wasn't from here and he had two great big laps in his truck. And he had this funky collar on it and it pulled loose and it took off right for our golden retriever. And Bob stepped between them and the guy started screaming. And he turned his back and I thought he's gonna get bit and the lady called the dog off. But, I mean, people come out here and bring their dogs to walk on our trails that aren't in our city. And I didn't, there's nobody to call, so I think it's a good thing that we have somebody that we can call.
Great.
Get dogs taken care of, that don't abide by laws.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
And I'm known, and known I would say a great idea. I think if you were to get your facts and figures from your city manager, we get, uh, we get, I'm just guessing with a hundred and eighty-five, maybe or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the state for law enforcement each year. We're spending a hundred and seventy of that with the sheriff. That leaves this additional amount, and I think it's your best insurance policy you can have. I deal quite a bit with insurance and claims. And, uh, when you do your best due diligence, if somebody gets bit, say, well, we did everything we could. You can't do any more than that. And, uh, if you're coming up short of that, then it would be questionable, but a good lawyer could probably say, well, you could have done this, why didn't you? It might have prevented this. And so you could be subject to a claim through your insurance company. So I'm, I'm just guessing, if you were to reach out to your insurance company, they would strongly endorse the fact, even though they haven't had a claim. Fortunately, in five years, I'm aware of two or three people that could have claimed and probably should have claimed because of not having that protection. It's a very cheap insurance policy as far as that goes. Strongly recommend, and Nona would recommend that you go ahead and move forward with that. That's why I'm speaking on this topic.
And I, I think it's worth noting that our supplemental law enforcement services grant paid us a hundred and seventy-seven thousand last year. And.
We're in public.
I know. Doesn't mean I can't say something.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, we have an extra twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a question and a couple of comments. Are you using, do you have a, your own dog ordinance in Blue Lake? Or are you using the county's dog ordinance if you do this contract?
We, we currently have our own ordinance on.
You have your own ordinance, okay. Uh, well, a point was just brought up that you can be walking past the, uh, Madera Brewery and you can go out onto the levee to the west. And I forget where the city boundaries are, but I believe that part of the levee is in the city. If you turn and go east, that's in the county. City levee, county levee. Dogs, they don't see the boundary. Um, and so what happens is enforcement becomes really difficult if the ordinances are different. And the deputies are put in a tough position, if that's who you call, to figure out where the city boundary is and what ordinance they're enforcing. So thanks for answering the question. And the comments are that I'm working with the city of Trinidad and the county sheriff's department and some other interested citizens from McKinneyville. Uh, and I would like to offer the invite to, if you want to have a representative from Blue Lake, join us, we're forming an ad hoc committee to look at our county ordinance, which is woefully old. For instance, under leash law. So what we've done is we're comparing up in Trinidad, we've got Trinidad, the Ranteria, BLM, state parks and the county. All within, you know, this little bitty area. And you go down to state beach, you're on state property. A lot of people love to let their dogs loose on state beach. Oh, he's a friendly one, you know, he can run it up into your face or whatever. Um, the best prevention of avoiding a bite is a leech. The county's leash law says must be under voice command.
Wow.
Unless you're at the airport or a park or around, uh, preschools or certain, a couple, a few, very few places where you have to have them on a leash. So it's not a leash law. It's a voice control law. And there are other problems, for instance, when those dogs were impounded here, I think they had something to do with the bites that happened in Trinidad before that previous. So it's known dangerous dogs. They got impounded, they got cleared for rabies, then they got let go even before the court hearing happened, which is required to determine are these dangerous animals that need to be put down, which is a horrible thing to do, because probably the animals at some point in their lives were probably just sweet little puppies. And then they became something else. And it's not just breed, it is breeding, it is, you know, the owners. Uh, so I just want to say, we're working to try and see if we might be able to get these ordinance all kind of lined up. And if you would be interested in joining us, we'd glad to have you. It might make a lot of sense in here with your different boundaries. So I just wanted to make that offer and give you that update. Because it is really old, it needs update on numerous items, and the sheriff has, uh, said, yeah, let's do it. So I'm working with, uh, one of his people and other volunteers, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. If you're interested, contact me.
Great, thanks.
Sorry.
Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Adeline Jones, um, thank you for that offer supervisor Madron. Um, we also had a law in Blue Lake that was under, the dogs should be under the command of their owners. And, um, I believe it was last year, we were able to finally codify a leash law in town. I think what we need, and that was a curious in- instance where, you know, we have to remember that Blue Lake is just less than one square mile, so we're talking about a small area. But anyway, I think one thing we should think about is signage. Because, um, as the summer approaches, the people are coming with their animals and they're on the levee. And I think some of this money should maybe be used for that rather than for the animal control.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead.
Yep, you guys, long night. Um, our prior speaker, you know, being mayor at the time, and we are going through our dog leash law that actually we had to, um, that took a lot of community effort, you guys, and it did for the justification for the fact that we can't really necessarily enforce it. But it's the realistic idea that once that ordinance is in place, if somebody does have an incident, at least they have a little bit of accountability as a dog owner potentially. Um, I was the one promoting every meeting for signage, it never happened. I would still love to see, we only have one way in town and one way at the bridge, that we do have, like I said in the past, signage at those areas if we are a leash law city, at least you guys are clear in liability doing that. I do support getting on with the sheriff's um, animal control contract. Yes, I agree, we should be a little more unilateral with that. But you guys, uh, this is not funny. And the time I talked to you last, cleaning stalls, busting my butt by myself, I have my over ten thousand dollar donkey freaking out next to me as a little pit bull is chasing him. I proceed to get my rifle because it's my only line of defense in a situation like this. Yell at the dog, thank God my verbal intercussion got that dog to run to my sister's house, which is not a safe place. Luckily, we were able to get the dog into a kennel and we are proceeding to call the sheriff's department. So I know I'm right across the bridge from town, but it's just something that we need the protection for the animals and accountability. I've never received a penny in my lifetime for the loss I've received on my livestock. But I always aspire to get that animal home safe and in responsible hands. That's step one. So whatever we can do to support the sheriffs, I think is important. I would like to get a little comment on us being more advocates at our budgeting period during the supervisors, that we can advocate more heavily for this funding so that it's not such a burden on their department for staff and not such a burden on us as a municipality to then apply. We need to get in the neuter scooter and public vet. I've talked to Elise about this in the past. We have venues here in town that could accommodate having a scooter or public vet come in doing free space and neutrers. We have amazing trainers in our community that can come in and do workshops. But yeah, my heart's a little pumped in tonight, you guys, but everything ended on a good note. And I think if we move forward with this, it'll end on a good note too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Becky, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, I, I think that, um, you've always been paying for, of course, the animal control. And the signs are there, but like Julie said, they're very limited. I do agree with what she has to say. For the most part, um, it's, you know, we really fought hard for that leash law when this happened to our friend and, and we really pushed it hard to get that through and we were glad that we did. We do need a little bit more signage up, like Julie said, and, you know, just, um, keep up the good work and, uh, you know, if, well, if we gotta pay for it to get that extra help, it's always nice to have. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And go ahead and bring that signage request to the Public Safety, Safety Commission, have them start reviewing it potentially as the public. All right, um, any other comments? Yes, Justin, go ahead.
I'd just like to say I'm not against this ordinance or paying for them. I would just ask if you could clarify with staff how much money has been spent and compare, you know, I'm a numbers guy. I like numbers. I like understanding what we're paying for, making sure we're giving value for what we're paying for. Um, and also just finding out, you know, what's the cost of this versus not doing this? Um, and I, I would think, I would hope you guys would wait until you find that out for sure. And also whether or not you truly do have the money that you can, that you can use that you've been overpaid or that you have left over for law enforcement services. I would make sure you confirm that that money can be used before you actually go through with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Any further public comment? Seeing none, let's bring it back to council for consideration.
I would like to share, um, I totally agree with, um, with Justin and like the numbers and the value thing. I was shocked when I learned that it costs twenty thousand dollars to get, um, the rabies vaccines if you get bitten by a dog that's not been vaccinated. Absolutely shocked. Um, I also want to bring up the trauma that somebody goes through when they get bit. And I think that if you asked any of those people, if they think we should spend less than ten thousand dollars on animal control per year, they would look at you and say, are you stupid? Why are you asking me that? Of course you should spend that money. Absolutely, you should spend that money. If it was ever you that got bit, if it was your family member, if it was your child, if it was your
If it was ever you that got bit, if it was your family member, if it was your child, if it was your dog, you would say absolutely, why are you guys pinching pennies on safety? This is a silly question. So excuse me if I'm a little extra passionate about this, but I've been working towards animal safety in this town for three years. And I can't imagine saying anything but yes to this proposal. Just can't imagine it. I've been bitten. I went nine years as a UPS driver without getting bitten. And when I got nailed, it changed me. It changed me for a while. I got over it. It was a few months, right? But I did eventually get over it, but I wasn't down on the ground with pit bulls on my throat, like our friend down the road. You know, I'm getting emotional just talking about this. Nobody should ever have to go through that for any reason that isn't even remotely preventable. And if we don't say yes to this, we're saying no to making this town as safe as we can make it.
Elise, I, I appreciate your passion. I really, really do. I think that, you know, what, everything that you're saying is valid. What I'm seeing in this contract does not guarantee that people are not going to have encounters with animals that are loose. It's not like a protective magic wall up. It does provide some options. We don't have twenty-four hour service. We don't have weekend service. Lots of times weekends are when people are out and about with their dogs. I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it. I do want to get a little bit more information of, about this. And if it was possible to possibly enhance the contract and the services provided a little bit, because it doesn't seem, I mean, it just seems like, you know, darn it. Oh, it's five oh one or, you know, whatever. I mean, that, this seems to happen sometimes and I understand that maybe there's going to be somebody who's going to be available and maybe they're going to respond, but I would like to see a more robust protective mechanism in place from this service that we are paying for. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not complaining about the amount. I'm complaining about the level of service honestly, because it's, so I would like some more information. Look at other options as far as, uh, I appreciate all the work that you've done and your, uh, your concerns, because they're, they're absolutely one hundred percent valid. Nobody, it's horrifying. I'm out of control dog or anybody getting injured and another animal, whatever. I completely agree. I would just like to see and explore some other possibilities or look at our, look at our numbers. Maybe it's not going to make any difference. And maybe we can't get anything extra, or maybe we can't get any extra service hours, or maybe we can't have that after hours hotline. Because if it is after hours, if it's a Saturday, then we're calling the sheriff anyway, right?
Well, they have a, one animal control officer, I believe, on Saturdays.
And they may or may not be available.
Right. Well, they serve the whole county. And so what we're, right now, we have no animal control services within the city unless we pay per event. Um, this gives us the same animal control services within the city that exist outside in the county areas. So, um, so it's, it's the service that the county provides to all unincorporated areas and we would be getting it within the city.
Danny, could you give us a per event? Not right now, obviously, but like maybe if we continue this conversation past this point. Pat, would, would you go ahead and comment on this? Do you have any comments?
You know, there's a, a sixty day notice to cancel. So, you know, it's not likely locked in for four years. And I think I definitely would prefer to have something than the nothing that we currently have. That said, this wouldn't go into action until the next year's budget anyway.
It would go in that, it would, it would start July first if we, if we adopt it now.
Take this up, um, if, if it's like, if you, it sounds like you're looking for a little bit more information to possibly expand the services. I just want to be clear on what we would have at night. You know, like what's the actual process? You know, what's the number that we call? What might be the general range of expectation? So that would be something to have maybe a little more detail on.
And then the number of events, our data, our, yes, again.
Well, I can tell you that there's been very.
I'd like to finish my comment if I might. So for me, it's not a matter of the number of events. It only takes one event to take a life, a small child or pet. And that's just not something that I want to turn my back on. So I, I'd like to see something like this, but if we, if we just need to revisit this in a couple of weeks with a more, a little more information, I'd be happy to do that. That's my two cents.
So what is the council feel at this point? Do we feel like voting on, at least go ahead, Elise.
Well, I feel like we could go forward with it and try to fine tune it over time. Um, I don't, um, you know, we can ask, uh, an animal control officer to, um, well, I would ask the director of the shelter to address some of your concerns, but I have spoken with her in the past and we talked about, um, you know, targeted enforcement of leash law and, and whatnot. And, um, you know, and again, if somebody has a problem with the dog, if they have a concern about a dog, they, that animal control will come out and, and investigate those concerns. And ultimately, hopefully, you know, avoid, avoid hazardous problems. That's what.
So I just wanna reiterate that having this in place is not a protective mechanism at all.
I mean, I'm not saying it's magic. It's something as opposed to nothing.
That being said, we have to have, we need to take a responsibility as a city to make sure that we're communicating very clearly with our, with our, our, our lovely city and, and we're making sure, I like the signage idea. I think that's fantastic. We need to be messaging that. We need to share that widely and I'll take a responsibility for that. Because this, again, is not always going to be able to help.
Danny, sir, apologies. No, is it, is there any issue, Danny, with us just tabling this?
No, we can table it till the next meeting if you like.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no time sensitive nature to this. Once you decide whether or not you want to have the contract, it goes to the board of supervisors for ratification. And then services start as soon as it's ratified. So it's, you know, there's not like some looming threat that it has to be done tonight.
Yeah, I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to put it off long. I just want to think about it a little bit longer. I want to read this contract. It's pretty dense.
It's the same as our law enforcement, almost word for word.
Hmm. Well, anyway, I just need a little more time.
Do we, does the council want to entertain a motion or direction?
So I guess it sounds like we might be wanting to ask staff to bring this back to the next regularly scheduled council meeting to revisit. That will give us a little over two weeks, around two weeks.
Yes. I think if we're going to do that, we should make a list of, um, questions we want answered. And we can make sure we get those answers.
Can we go to Danny later, not this meeting, or do we need to ask the questions now?
If you guys have questions, you can send them to me and then I will come, you know, get the answers together and then blind copy all of you so you can see the answers without having serial communications.
Great.
And then maybe asking the public if there's any specific questions they have. Cause had we already done public comment on this?
We did do public comments, yes.
That's been a long night.
Time to keep moving. All right, so can we get a motion?
To bring it back. That's.
You don't need a motion for that. It's just a direction to bring it back. Either they're not going to take action at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was the end of your thing. So an adjournment motion is always in order.
Um, perhaps we should talk about future agenda items.
Agenda items.
There's not an.
We don't have it on here.
It's not on here. Um, if you have them, please email them to me and I will bring them to the ad hoc agenda committee for consideration at the next meeting. But pretty much what we're looking at is everything that didn't get handled tonight and then some more new stuff.
And some more new stuff. Way standard.
Yeah, everything that didn't get handled tonight, you mean things we're bringing back.
Yes, we're, so we would be bringing back your, uh, applicants for arts and heritage. And then we would be bringing back this sheriff's contract. And then we would also have the HWA and budget. It got bumped, uh, the HWA got bumped to your next meeting, so.
Can we try and have future agenda item on the next time?
Yes, usually, they don't usually appear on special meetings.
Okay.
Cause you're not usually setting your next, your regular meetings agenda at your special meeting.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, no worries.
I would like to make a request that every agenda, even a special meeting agenda, has a space for, uh, council and staff reports and future agenda items.
It just seems like it gets confusing if we're doing reports twice a month.
But we don't have to do them, but as the fact that it's not on this agenda means we can't report out on anything that isn't on the agenda. And there's some items that we should be able to report out in a timely manner. And so if it doesn't appear on this agenda, then we're restricted to once a month being able to report things that we want to share with the public. So, um.
That's typically how that's done. Usually you don't use your special meetings for reporting out because they're not considered your regular meeting where you're likely to get the most attendance and, and audience participation, constituent participation. There's a reason we don't put these kinds of things on your special meetings.
Right, except that our special meetings aren't so special. They're kind of a regular thing.
Unfortunately for you guys, that's become true. However, it does not change the protocol of how this is usually handled.
Just brings us back to the need for this meeting twice a month.
Yeah, if you guys want to, you know, change how your council has, if you want to change and have two regular meetings per month, then you can, we can, you know, address that.
I think there's a ten solely a reason to do that.
Let's, we can't really have this conversation right now. I think we need to go ahead and wait. If you want to bring.
Let's put it on the agenda that we can't talk about.
Well, send it, send it to Danny and then we'll, we'll try and.
Yeah, send me your agenda requests. I will make sure they get, get handled.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of the, there's public which to comment on that? All of the favors. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
You know, we.